Good afternoon. Happy Groundhog's Day. We've been here before. Ha ha. Sorry. All right, I'd like to call the City Council meeting of February 20, February 2, 2016, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hodges, Mario.
Here.
Ralphs, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Great. Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. As you know, each month, we like to recognize employees who have achieved certain milestones for their service to the city, and so I'd like to read their names into the record. With five years of service to the city, Lucas Bayer, Water Treatment Plant Operator 3, Public Works Department; Gabriel Donald, firefighter, Fire Department; Renzo Derbyano, fire engineer, Fire Department; Jason Fernandez, firefighter, Fire Department; Jesse Guana, firefighter, Fire Department; Patrick Irie, fire engineer, Fire Department; Alex Cargbo, firefighter, Fire Department; Mark Kramer, firefighter, Fire Department; Ryan Ortiz, firefighter, with the Fire Department; Isaac Siegel, fire engineer, with the Fire Department; and Daniel Warren, firefighter for the Fire Department. That was a good year for the Fire Department, five years ago in February. With ten years of service, Rick Ornellis, facility maintenance worker 2, Public Works Department; and Julie Rodriguez, Planning Commission Secretary with the Community Development Department; and with fifteen years of service to the city, Ryan DeJean, police officer with the Police Department; Kelly Greeley, Senior Control Systems Operations Specialist, Public Works Department; Kenneth Kushner, Police Lieutenant, Police Department; Jeff McKee, Airport Facilities Manager, Airport Department; and Pete Tenioso, ground maintenance worker 2, with the Airport Department.
Great. Congratulations to everyone. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. We have a number of speaker slips here, and I'd like to start. We have a group here from our sister city of Dingle, Ireland, so welcome, and why don't you come on up and introduce yourselves? You're here in official capacity as well, so welcome back to Santa Barbara.
Well, I'm a native here now. I've been here for thirty years, but I'm just here to introduce all these people from Dingle. And this is Brian Distack, Morris Galway, he's bringing, he's the head man from the Dingle, the Dingles Sister, not the Dingles Sisters, what do you call it, the Film Festival. And he has brought six animated movies to be shown here at our film festival. This is his wife, Kathy.
Come up a little closer, we don't bite. It's okay.
Mike Dowling, come on up here.
There you go. That's all right.
Maureid Distack. And then, where's Sean? There's Sean Distack, Maureid, and Brian's son and their daughter-in-law, Megan.
Great.
So I let them do the rest of the talking. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
In 2003, myself and Maureid, my wife, had the great pleasure of standing here with five more people to begin the sistership of Dingle and Santa Barbara. And it was a wonderful occasion, and we had, obviously, had a great time because we're still here, we're still standing, and we're back to you. Last year, we came as well, and we, while I was here, I got the idea of maybe connecting with our film festival in Dingle and the Santa Barbara. Now, like Dingle and Santa Barbara, Dingle is a very small place, but we pack a big punch. And we brought true Roger Dooling, your man in the Film Festival, here. I introduced the idea that maybe we might have a little connection, a little connection. So the connection has been fixed, and Morris here will tell you what that means. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Met Alina. Yeah, like Alina said earlier, like out of a very small conversation, you know, Brian herself, an introduction to Roger Dooling, and Roger Dooling got in touch with myself. He told me about Santa Barbara enjoying animation. So we have a platform of animation in the Dingle International Film Festival called Animation Dingle. And it's only four years going, but it's already become the number one gathering for animators in the country, recognized by Animation Ireland. And the program I put together is a representation of what's going on in the country today with animation, which is going through quite a renaissance. And a lot of its journey began back in 94, when an American company came into Dublin called O'Sullivan Blute, and they met a man there called Jimmy Timorikami, who came from Los Angeles. He did things like, was it Turtles? And the Snowman, a wonderful animator. And O'Sullivan Blute came to Ireland. They created films like An American Tale, and they employed over 324 people in Dublin. And from that employment, a number of those students, who were students coming out of the art colleges, came with him back to Los Angeles. They began working for Disney Studios and 20th Century Fox. And they've come back, and they've set up companies, and a number of them have been Oscar nominated now three years. Just last year, Cartoon Saloon was part of the program I'm showing, was Oscar nominated for Song of the Sea, and their first Oscar nomination was for Secret of Kells. Brownback Films is represented, also Oscar nominated. So we're showing kind of like the high end that's going on in Ireland, and right down to several students have been selected coming out of the main animation colleges. And finally, I'd just say, like, the main animation magazine here in the States is called Animation Magazine. As part of their 250th anniversary edition, they cited the twenty-five-not-to-be-missed events in the world to do with animation, and we were part of that list, so thank you very much. Finally, actually, in relation to Brian, we are here as well in another capacity, and that's with the Peck family. This year, along with Ireland's centenary, it's also the birth centenary of Gregory Peck. He was born in April 5, 1916, and his grandmother came from just outside Dingle, Catherine Ash, and he was also related to Thomas Ash, who was a major figure in the Easter Rising in Ireland. So we've invited the Peck family here to Santa Barbara, and Brian Distack designs this beautiful award that's based on the Aglish pillar, which is now housed in the National Museum in Ireland, but originally came from just outside Dingle in Menard. It's got Ohm writing, which is one of the oldest forms of writing in the world. And Brian and myself will present the Peck family this Saturday with the Peck Award for his birth centenary. Thanks very much for listening.
And tell us when the animated animation is going to show during the Film Festival.
Thanks. The reason we're here. So yeah, as part of the Santa Barbara International Film Festival, we're screening in the Metro 4 Theater Thursday at 20:06 and Saturday again at 20:12. The program's about an hour and a half, and I'll do a Q and A after one or each of them, I'm not too sure.
Great. Well, welcome and enjoy the Film Festival. We're so glad you are a part of it and a little idea of a conversation, and here you are, and you're back. So fantastic. So enjoy. Enjoy the Film Festival. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue with, oh yes, go right ahead.
I just forgot to ask how many of the city councillors are coming to our party tonight?
Ah, there we go.
You never RSVP'd to it. So I have to do it now.
How can you miss a party thrown on by the Dingles Sister City? Great. Okay, we'll continue on with Kenneth Locke, to be followed by Jose Arturo Gallegos.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I want to get in and explain a little bit about the whole concept of holistic health. And I think it's really important that I've been raised up as a teacher through the means of tennis in relation to holistic health. And it's kind of an honor to kind of be the first teacher in relation to the connection between tennis and holistic health. And one thing I find, which is really interesting, is kind of in a biblical sense, the idea that holistic health is related to being holy, and then the idea of what does it mean to be holy? And then I was like, okay, what does it mean to be righteous? So it turns out that when a student actually increases knowledge in relation to becoming holistically healthy through the means of tennis, it would be equated to kind of a righteous act. You know, it'd be something that would be of righteousness. And so I'm actually bringing to the tables for kind of education now to actually understand that connection. And then, kind of in the Bible, it talks about the holy will be holy still, the righteous will be righteous still, the unjust will be unjust still, and then the filthy will be filthy still. And I'm going to be bringing this knowledge to the table so we can kind of get by that filthy category. And then once everybody has knowledge of holistic health and what being ambidextrous, it's kind of like a non-competitive, it's where we understand the concept of peace kind of situation versus war. And the idea is that when a person becomes righteous, still, is the nature of becoming aware and then acting upon that and then increasing versus the unjust, who will become aware and not entertain that relationship. But I'm doing a little bit of thinking and writing about that. I just thought I'd share that with you today. Thank you.
Jose Arturo Gallegos will be followed by Phil Walker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yesterday, about mid-morning or so, I went to the library to look for an acquaintance. He wasn't there, but when I went back down, he usually hangs upstairs, I went back downstairs and I ran to another acquaintance who I had met for the first time that I became homeless, one year after 9/11. And he is still homeless, but right now he's staying at Path with Casa Esperanza. And I asked him, "Well, how are things over there?" He goes, "Yeah, pretty much the same." And I asked him, "Well, aren't they breathalyzing people there?" And he goes, "Very seldom." So people do go to Path, Casa Esperanza, you know, still under the influence of drugs and alcohol. Another gentleman, who happens to be sitting on my right side, he told me that he was staying there as well. And what happened to him, which happened in Oxtard, I'm not sure if it was a shelter or what, but a man in his early twenties slashed his left wrist with a knife. So now he's staying here at that path. And that young gentleman who slashed him is staying there too. And he's telling me, he did ask one of the staff members, "Don't they do a background check on individuals that may have warrants for their arrest?" Now, I think that would be a good idea for city, council, state, maybe even nationwide, because there are a lot of people who do need help, but to be surrounded, you know, with people with violent histories, it's not a good thing. Also, there is a lot of drug activity taking place in the bathrooms. And these are two people, well, one individual I haven't seen in a long time, and this gentleman who is staying there. And Councilmember Dominguez, I do hope, and congratulations on your election, and I hope you will, you know, look into this, because I called up Alan Bleeker yesterday, left a message. He got back to me.
Thank you.
And I told him what's going on.
Thank you. Phil Walker will be followed by Pete Dalbello.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. There was a photo headliner on the paper, news press yesterday. It showed Cali Caesar Chavez Jeep bowling through it, right adjacent to the Conrock Vulcan, now it's Semex plant there. And you know, that's been a problem for eons, and possibly when the, it goes underwater at the dip there, temporary reverting to South Sepultis, get out if you can, because, you know, I think close to a million bucks was put into that drainage upgrade twelve, fourteen years ago, so you've got to measure three times, cut once. Another couple of quick items, I heard a county fire battalion chief yesterday, and he said, "So many of the homeowners, when the trees have come down, they said, 'Well, we were thinking about consulting an arborist, but we just never quite got around to it.'" And they, you know, "We lost some trees here, and they had big, big problems to the south of us." So it's all tied in with the weather, extreme conditions, you know, the pattern's setting up right now, possibly dry, we possibly get something similar to the March miracle, because if you look historically back at the rainfall records, we had a very dry up to January, where we had four inches, they had 2.55 February, 3.5 inches, then you got to 11 inches in March. Thank you.
Pete Dalbello will be followed by Tom Widrow.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Dalbello. I'm a Santa Barbara native, and I've known the east side all forty-four years of my life. As Jason could tell you, I'm really passionate about the city of Santa Barbara. I mentioned last week that I was seriously considering filing an appeal, because I disagreed with the January 20 decision by Staff Hearing Officer Susan Reardon regarding the proposed medical marijuana dispensary at 118 North Melpus Street. And two days last week, I did file the appeal, and I actually presented copies to, for every member of the, each commissioner on the Planning Commission, and, because that's where it's going to be appealed to, as well as appropriate staff. I brought copies of, I guess, the Reader's Digest version for each of you, because it's a possibility that the Planning Commission might kick it to the City Council. So, and then, and if, and if, who knows, if you have a tough night sleeping, maybe my writing could cure insomnia. So a little bit of everything. I actually have copies for everybody here, and I have it organized. It starts with Mr. Casey all the way around. And actually, with the forty seconds I have left, I'll just briefly mention, one of my concerns is parking, and the canopy parking plan, which is included there. It does not, it only factors in parking from Monday through Friday. It does not include parking on Saturday, which naturally, there'll be more cars there, because people are driving their cars to work during the week. And also, it doesn't factor in these streets as being residential streets as well. So, and it also did not include Warner Maria, which is the street behind it, which is one block long. So thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you so much.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Andrea Roslinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tom Widrow, City Watch. I thought I'd just take an opportunity in the beginning of the new year, just to reintroduce myself. I know I know all of you, but just to give you a sense of my background and why City Watch exists. I went to UCSB. I got a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in history and public policy. I wrote a thesis on the preservation of the national wilderness called the San Rafael Wilderness back in 1964. It involved Pearl Chase. And always interested in public policy. Had a part of my career working for a congressman, an assembly member, a county supervisor, advising on a number of different political campaigns, and have always been fascinated by this. My professional career, though, is veered towards the private sector, where I do consultancy, do management consulting. I was asked by a group of Santa Barbarans who wanted a voice here at City Council, but they can't be here on a regular basis to give their input. They asked whether or not I'd be interested in representing them. They're folks that you know, people who are in real estate, people who are in business, homemakers. There's a, you know, it's a group of about a couple dozen folks who kind of come together and they want input. And that's what I'm here to do when I show up. I'm also on the radio, and invite you all to be on the radio. Some of you have been on with me. Also write editorials in the news press. And once again, more than happy to have you come to our steering committee meetings. We'd like to be a collaborative and constructive part of public policy. There may be times, as good watchdog group does, where there is a bit of a conflict and things get uncomfortable, but that's our democracy, and hopefully that's a good thing for most, I'm sure for most of you, if not all of you. I think you'd see that it is, and it was this last year. So, once again, I appreciate all of your warm receptions as City Watch goes forward in the new year, and I invite you to join us and get involved. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Mario has a question for you.
Mr. Widrow, I'm sorry. So you're saying you're inviting us to your steering committee meetings?
Sometimes, yeah, absolutely. If you'd like to come sometime and talk about issues that matter to you, it's not secretive, you know? These are, these are wider. Our issues are road maintenance, budget, highway one-on-one ride widening.
Well, let me ask a second question, then. You said a dozen people. Can you give us some of those names?
If you come to those meetings, I'd be happy to. I don't think they want to chair them today, but you'll know.
You said there was no secret, so here we are in public.
Maybe, maybe they don't want to announce today in public, but if you want to come, you're invited.
Thank you.
Andrea Roslinski will be followed by Robert Burke.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Well, I was going to say thank you, because I heard Officer DeJean, I remember him, he's one of the first restorative police, and he helped a friend of mine, Bernard. He moved to Oregon, he was a vet, and he's been clean and sober since, and he has an apartment near the university there in Portland, or wherever it is. And also, I'm in school again in ecological restoration. We fixed a building on City College the other day before the rains, because it was going into, kind of by the hill at the top of Pershing Park, because it was going into the ceramic building. And we're going to be doing projects planting milkweed, because monarch butterflies are endangered. But I also wanted to say stuff about Path, unfortunately, because I have a friend who was brought there from Cottage Hospital, but he had a bad five or six days, and then they, I don't want to say throw him out, but they asked him to leave. And I think it just needs to be more organized with more mental health workers there, or they need to, at least, I referred him to the warming centers, because they were open for two days. But sometimes, yeah, there's people doing stuff in the bathroom, and then people that breathalyze, they throw out. And there should be more structure and not, they're enabling a lot of people that have been there for a long time. But I don't want to talk about that too much. And about the medical marijuana, I think that's a good thing. I wrote something to the mayor the other day, and I really think we should look at that as an asset, like in Colorado or Washington, where they used it to fix infrastructure. And, you know, it actually could be beneficial here. You know, they could even have, maybe after November, they could have like medical marijuana retreats, where you have ganja butter and all kinds of pancakes, and really, you know, have people coming and... and all kinds of pancakes, and really, you know, have people coming and enjoying the healing, and probably almost, and.
Thank you.
Shouldn't be stigmatized. Thank you.
Robert Burke will be followed by Michael Baker, and then Raven, and the final speaker will be Cruzito Herrera Cruz.
I could be listening to them talk all day. What a treat. Madam Mayor, members, Mother Nature, Father Son, Sister Moon, Brother Stars, when we personify objects, are these projections of our human characteristics or reflections of the innate characteristics of objects? Some say everything has consciousness, whether a bird, a person, a stone, a cloud, a tree, or a road. The hills are alive with the sound of music, with songs they have sung for a thousand years. Beauty is not a luxury, it is a necessity for the meaning of life, a blazing sunset, a breeze through the trees, a friendly hug, a laughing squealing baby, a wilesome kiss that lasts a millennium. Do you not yearn to connect, to be embraced by a higher power, to be unfolded in the arms of grace and love? To come home, to leave the too-usual low-grade depression of isolation of singular existence for the celebration of soulful connection in community? To exchange, as in It's a Wonderful Life, Jimmy Stewart's Separation, Desperation, Isolation, for a living-room throng of enthusiasm jubilee participation? You're going to perform due diligence as you hold a cogent conversation about how to dice and slice according to situations and circumstances, as if we were masters of the universe in the contest between private property and public welfare, as if with an intelligence greater than who created all that is, as if we are, as if after we are dead, we could take some dirt with us rather than be buried in it. I invite you to mind the boundless gap we create with meticulous words and deliberate deeds based upon the assumption of our singularity and separation, rather meld the self-created diaphanous gap between ourselves and Mother Nature, Father Son, Sister Moon, and Brother Stars, Madam Mayor, members.
Michael Baker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Club, Santa Barbara County. I want to first and foremost thank each and every one of you for your continued support, and what's being passed around to you right now is our annual report from this past year. I really want you to take a lot of pride in that, that we had a really good year this past year, and it wouldn't have been possible without the tremendous support of the community. And we've made significant impact, and we're certainly going in the right direction. So take your time and read that at your, at your leisure. I did want to invite Councilmember Dominguez, welcome aboard, and look forward to working with you in the, in the future as well, with help with the Boys and Girls Clubs, and love to get you down at the facility for a tour of the West Side Club. Again, I want to continue to thank each and every one of you for your continued support. And special, special thank you to, to our City Manager, Paul, for all your support behind the scenes, really appreciate that, and I know that you're a big supporter of the Boys and Girls Clubs, and we couldn't do what we do if it wasn't for you, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Raven.
I have never done this. I am a victim of domestic, and I'm going through the situation of working with PATH, trying to get back into society. I was a former employee of Cottage Hospital, and there is a lot of issues, and the way that it's structured is encouraging, and it enables people to not become functioning people of society again. It caters to their long-term versus anybody coming in to look to get back into the structure of life through the little helps of things. Their liability, the city is paying them to be open and keep people off the street, but then they're turning women out on the street at night. Anything happens to those women, would you not be liable? I'm suggesting that maybe you have secret shoppers go through these facilities, maybe you should have report cards done on, on people that are going through these facilities to see where the progress is going, instead of clogging the system up for people that are trying to really get back to their lives and being stuck behind these things. There is a lot of drug use, there's a lot of sick people in the city, and they would prefer to be on the street than to be dehumanized for a secure paycheck on the other side. And that's basically what it is, you're not being addressed to the issues you need, you're security to their paycheck. So I encourage you guys to maybe look at that, it's wasteful money. People are on the streets getting tickets for being on the streets, and then these systems are set up to help them get out of the tickets. There's community service, and you can teach people to be leaders again by showing them what they're doing wrong, and they have more time than money. If they had the money, they wouldn't be on the streets, would they? I'm just, I think you guys should really take a closer look at what's going on, just for your own benefit, as well as society's. Thank you.
Cruzito Herrera Cruz.
Buenas tardes, good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and Councilmembers and those in the District One. I am Cruzito Herrera Cruz. As public policymakers, PP, you're doing piss poor, in the sense that City Council policies within your duties require quarterly meetings, say, for district-based elections. You can create now district management plans for our districts, look at infrastructure, look at housing, look at the social service needs that we're talking about. The liaisons to the Melpas area have failed, Hart, White, to mediate over two competing business district proposals, have failed to mediate under the economic development program you're responsible for under your own policies and duties. Look them up. I think the solution for that is to create a pilot program and to have self-fund it. If we're a tourist-based economy, let's invest into our community. We could self-fund that through the Streets and Highways Code, municipal bond. We could look at housing, infrastructure. We talked about the anniversary of Treaty Guadalupe Hidalgo, where we have to respect Mexican-American rights. Brown lives matter in Santa Barbara, when we forget and neglect the community on the West Side and the East Side. District One has a lot of issues. You have to help Dominguez, you hearing that? All these people are in District One, you need to back them up. Because if we don't do it, we're losing, our community is losing, we get disrespected for the outsiders to come in. Say 118, the marijuana shop, the outsiders will come in disrespect. When there was something on Olive Street, I would walk, I would get violence, I would be harassed. So I could forecast the violence coming from outsiders, so think about it.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, there are no items to read, so if anyone needs to pull anything off, or is there a motion? Is this for someone?
Madam Mayor.
Item seven, there's a request. Yes, Ms. Maria.
I wanted to ask a question about item seven.
Okay. So, Mr. Four, if you could read item seven.
Excuse me, item seven, contract with County of Santa Barbara for licensed review of maps and subdivisions.
Okay, Ms. Maria.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Owaziak. I'm wondering if it's a temporary contract, the contract is not attached to the report, what's the term of the contract? Is it temporary? And then, could you tell me a little bit about, will we keep our surveyor's office? And I'm assuming there's a lot of records there, and what kind of facilities will, will we maintain on the city side?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Maria, the term of the contract is to the end of this fiscal year, with provision for it to be extended, if the need exists for, for it to be extended. So the, with the promotion of Brendan Moore to our city engineer, we have a vacancy in the principal engineer, and we're recruiting for that position. And that would include the, the hope that we would have that licensed engineer either be a licensed surveyor or be licensed prior to 1982, which then grandfathers them to sign as the city surveyor, as Mr. Kelly did before his resignation with the city. And so this is to fill the need for the city to have the ability to sign the Subdivision Map Act documents and maps, so that we can process our applications for the development. So with that, the survey office is being retained by the Public Works Department, and our real property staff are currently moved, moved into that office, and all the survey records are being preserved and utilized for city purposes. So we do still have a surveyor staff member on board that is assisting with us in this time of transition, but the, it's important for us to retain our survey documentation so that we would have it for the, for, for the city indefinitely.
So there will be someone, a city staff person, to work with the county staff person?
That's correct. It'll be under my, my purview, my charge to work with the county surveyor's office, and we would have our city land development projects that require licensed surveyor signature and review, that that, that they would provide that service, at least in the interim.
So the two employees that are not there anymore, they didn't have the correct certification or licensing?
That's correct. City doesn't currently have a staff member employed that has the certification to review and sign these, these maps under the Subdivision Map Act.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe you were, I was sort of flipping through my notes, and maybe you said, how long is this proposal thought to be in place?
We have the term of the, of the agreement set for the end of this fiscal, so June 30th, or June 30 days, half September, April, June.
Of this fiscal year.
This fiscal year, correct.
So the thought is that after that, that the city would then be back, capable of handling that?
Our recruitment would target to have that ability, to have that staff member sign, as the, as the city surveyor.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question on five, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a public comment speaker for item seven, so Mr. Walker, if you'd like to come on up.
Having had a little neighbor-on-neighbor conflict, which was resolved by a good survey done in 1978, when I placed Sears Chain Lake Fence on the property line, adjacent to the neighbor's property, and I had to go to the county and get the survey map for the Campo Feliz development, all but my property, both in the back and on the East Side. And there, Joseph Waters, who did the survey for the Campo Feliz development, noted that Delbert Smith had tagged my right rear property line, and that marker was still good, tagged in 78, because historically, a lot of people always place their fence two inches in on their property to, to avoid neighbor-on-neighbor disputes. And once the property owner to the west of me saw that, it was a moot point. Thank you.
Thank you. And then you had item five? If you could read item five, please.
Item five, sub-request to negotiate a recycled water sales agreement with Lacumbra Mutual Water Company.
Great, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask that, there's a list of issues to be addressed in that, in that agreement, and I would ask that the collaborative well-use be added as an additional item for consideration in that agreement.
Okay, I guess that's direction to staff. All right. Any, anything else? Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Moved by Maria, second by Hotchkiss, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, item number nine.
Item nine, Cabrillo Ballpark renovation project.
Okay, Ms. Zachary.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director, and I have with me here today, Justin Van Mullum, Associate Planner with the department, and also Rich Hannah, one of our recreation managers. What we'd like to do with today's presentation is give you background on the concept plans for the park renovation, and seek your direction on whether to include a basketball court as we proceed with further design of the project. Renovation of this park began back in 2011, 2010. We had significant safety concerns at the ballpark due to the type of activity that occurred, was occurring there. We also had significant concerns about park infrastructure conditions, such so that it was impeding the ability of the public to actively use the park, particularly young children. At that time, a number of stakeholder meetings were held, including one that the City Council held in the East Side neighborhood, the Franklin Community Center, and then also the Parks and Recreation Commission, where different members of the community and stakeholders, businesses and property owners, property managers in the vicinity, all weighed in on what we needed to do to improve conditions at the park. From 2011 to 2014, we made a number of improvements. We, we did improve the drainage somewhat, we replaced the ballfield pole lights, we fenced the area around the restroom to reduce the type of activity that was going on there, and then continued to sort of put together, through council approval through the various fiscal years, the funding to actually undertake a full-scale renovation. In 2014, fall 2014, with a significant amount of funding in place, we began some conceptual planning, which we'd like to go through with you today. So Cabrillo Ballpark has actually been owned by the city, it was purchased 1925 and 1927. It's been a ballfield since its inception, it has a varied history. It, if you look at this overhead slide, you can see this area here is essentially the active ballfield portion of the park. Today, it continues to be used by youth and adults, it's programmed year-round. It also is an opportunity for free drop-in play, people play frisbee there, they may any sorts of activities. The park itself has an area, this is the area that we'll be talking more about as part of this presentation, that is largely underutilized, that would be an opportunity to further enhance the park.
Quick question, if I could, sorry. That area, since you brought that up, that's, sometimes under water.
As in today, I think I saw.
Are we going to get into that at some point?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss? Yes, and in short, we recognize that due to the location of the park, that it does periodically get inundated with water when we have high storm events or a lot of rain. Some of the drainage improvements that we completed have improved that. As part of the renovation, we would do further improvements in terms of the leveling of the field, but anything that we do install there would need to be able to withstand wet periods, since we're not going to change the grade substantially. So as we move forward with developing a park improvement plan, we really focused on ways in which to renovate the entire park, and some of the things that are included in the plan are enhancing the park entry points, opening views into the park, making it more inviting, welcoming the public in, making it a place that they want to go. We heard a lot from members of the community that they wanted it to be more walkable, improving the pedestrian accessibility, particularly for residents of the East Side. And then as we looked at the active ballfield area, we have known we've needed to make irrigation improvements there, drainage improvements there, but also realizing that to program any other kind of recreation use in this park, we need to define that active ballfield area. And our plan proposes, and I'll show in a future slide, installation of a home-run fence that would separate the uses within the park. We also have plans to restore some of the trees, improve the landscaping, and then establish a new recreation area. There were five main options that came up in 2011 for looking at the park, and in 2014, we took a closer look at those, between an off-leash dog area, basketball court, adult fitness, youth skate plaza, and took those suggestions and further evaluation to the Parks and Recreation Commission in January 2015. We essentially evaluated the different options based on their size, compatibility, anticipated use by the public, cost to operate and maintain, construct, and whether it was an appropriate location for that type of activity, or whether it already existed in other areas in the vicinity, or could exist in other areas of the vicinity. So an example being the off-leash dog area could exist in other areas of the city as well. At the January 28th meeting, the Parks and Recreation Commission voiced support overall for the project, and asked staff to look further into developing concept plans for an adult fitness area, combined with some sort of youth, youth play concept, or basketball courts, or some combination of fitness and basketball. And with that, we, working with CJM LA, who's our architect, landscape architect consultant, spent some time further developing conceptual plans. So this plan was presented to the commission in October 2015. It shows essentially, again, the active ballfield area and how it would be defined. One of the advantages of installing a home-run fence in this location, in addition to separating uses, is it does give us the opportunity to look at ways to program the field for other field recreation. We do have a need for additional stock. We do have a need for additional soccer fields within the city. One of the key requests that we got from the community in terms of walkability, we've accommodated with widening the sidewalks, and then making a connection. So this gray line here, it would actually be new sidewalk within the park, so anyone who wanted to walk around the park could be brought into the park, rather than drawn out to the street and the traffic. And similarly, in this location as well. This concept plan gives you a sense of where that area for other recreation could occur. It's about 16,000 square feet, so it gives you a sense of how we'd proceed with designing what could occur in that location. Just very quickly, to give council a sense of the entrances, because we believe this is an important part of the project. Currently, it's not very friendly at the Milpiss and Calle Puerto Vallarta entrance. We'd widen the sidewalk, we'd install landscaping, we'd relocate and redesign the fencing that's around the restroom, so it would be more aesthetically pleasing. And then we'd also ensure that public access into this area met today's codes and would be more warm and inviting. At the Cabrillo and Milpiss entrance, we have the opportunity to create a much better connection between the park and Chase Palm Park East Beach, and then also recognize that this area is undergoing redevelopment. The Santa Barbara Inn is currently getting renovated. We want to be able to draw people into the park, both to enjoy the park passively, but also if we have active use, or other uses, to know that there's other things that they can do when they go to Cabrillo Ballpark. This concept plan shows, these bubbles are actually places where we could potentially have some sort of adult fitness area or adult fitness equipment. This is an open plaza that would provide open views into the park. The existing gray area is existing sidewalk that would be slightly improved, and then this is that interior walk area. When we started looking more closely at recreation options, taking from the commission their direction to look at play areas, to look at adult fitness, to look at basketball, we really tried to consider what would be most appropriate for this location, in terms of intensity and size and aesthetics, how it would fit with the ball field, how it would fit with the neighborhood, concern for neighborhood compatibility, also for how it would be managed by the department, wanting to be able to put in something that we felt we could operate and manage. So we looked at other communities, other cities, for some options to evaluate where to go. And then we looked more closely as well at fitness equipment. It's something the department's been trying to put in parks for a number of years. We've had a number of requests, both in neighborhoods and at the beachfront, from both sports enthusiasts, but also individuals that actually conduct classes and programs. It's a way for people to exercise in the outdoors. Cabrillo Ballpark has the potential to be a natural fit because of the type of activity that's already occurring in the waterfront, in terms of running and walking and cycling, and its connection to the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House, which one day will be renovated as well for community recreation. This style is what we've conceived would be potentially feasible for the location. It's open, as it would be more aesthetically compatible with the environment, and fairly easy to install and maintain. So in October, when we went back to the commission with concepts, and I would point out, these are conceptual, so anything can move around. We're still very much in the design phase. We haven't been to the Design Review Board, Historic Landmarks, for any review of this yet. But this gives a sense of, in this area, how we might have an adult fitness area. This also includes some concepts for children's play mounds and children's play features, and then an interior walkway. So essentially, quite a passive use, that would be potentially used for both drop-in activity, but then also could potentially be programmed by the department, so we could have actual fitness classes on, exercise equipment. When we developed the concepts for combining fitness and basketball, tried to find a way to orient a court, determined that the appropriate size of the court would be a junior high-sized court, so not, not high school, not competition, smaller court, based on its relationship, wanting to balance the, there it is, where the ball field is, where there would be a walking path, where there might be other adult fitness options. And again, any of this could move around as we move through the design process. The idea behind a basketball court in this park would be that it would be drop-in use only. It would not be something that would be programmed for regular activity. It could be used for a wide range of individuals, from teenagers to adults, and would meet a broader need of just drop-in recreational use. Also sensitive to the location, and not wanting to have a basketball court necessarily overtake the whole site. As I mentioned earlier, we've had quite a bit of stakeholder input, from both residents on the east side, community group members, stakeholders in the neighborhood, stakeholders that actively use the park now, Major League softball, for example, has been a stakeholder. The adjacent property owners and hotel managers are stakeholders as well. Over the years, we've had a number of meetings around what could be done. The most recent meeting we had was at the site on October 15th. We had 25 people show up to view the same conceptual plans that we just showed you, and provide us with their input. What we've heard is consistent support for fitness, and some sort of adult fitness component. Some concern, and in case, in some cases, opposition, particularly from the adjacent hotels, about the noise and compatibility concerns there might be with basketball, and how we might manage that. And then also, a desire that we spend more time looking at other locations in the waterfront, which is challenging, because it's a multi-departmental evaluation, it's been done before, and it would take a whole separate work effort for us to do that, to really pursue it in collaboration with other departments. At the commission level in October, the commission overwhelmingly confirmed that they'd like to see this park renovated, and they want to see as much active recreation there as possible. At the same time, there was a mix of concern over the balance of aesthetics, noise, how the site would be managed, and community use. And it did really boil down to whether to have a basketball court there or not. Because the commission was split, we spent some time doing some more research, on could we relocate it, could we move it away, how could we manage it in a way that might minimize that? And then we also presented the project to the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and they overwhelmingly recommended looking at basketball as an option, and supported the other concepts as well. When we returned to the commission in December, we presented some of that information, and essentially, because we're just in a concept phase, there is the opportunity to potentially move the court further away, for example, from the hotel. We can't definitively say how noise levels would change, but we could assume that there's a way to move it away, also from an aesthetic standpoint, there's concern. The actual look, feel, and function of the basketball court can go through a number of different changes as well, based on the design process. And then how we manage it, could minimize how it's used. None of the active recreation area, we would currently consider would be something that would be lit and in use after night, so it would be daylight hours only. At the commission meeting, the commissioners actually voted that we would proceed with further design, looking at both basketball and adult fitness option. I do have two commissioners here today, Leslie Wiscombe and Ed Cavazos, who might have the opportunity to speak to council on their deliberation. So given that, and given the extensive discussion that there's been about what to do, and the need for the city to move, for the department to move forward, we're finding its concept plans, and go through design and development review, and then invest the resources in the park. We are seeking direction from council today regarding how you might like us to proceed as we move forward with concept planning and the project itself. I would just briefly point out and mention, again, we have about 860,000 allocated for the total project. Our preliminary cost estimates are on the order of a million for construction. But again, we're so early in the process that a lot of that could change, just want to be sure that council understands that that's also something that we're looking at. With that, concludes my presentation. Thank you.
So questions first, and then we have public comment. I'll just start, since you mentioned funding. You know, there's grants from National Institutes of Health, and other kinds of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and others, and this is exactly the type of thing they like to fund. So I don't know if you've even started broaching the topic with them and looking at their grant cycles, and...
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, we have not done that. One thing we wanted to be sure is that we were on a design path that we thought was, had potential to move forward. Our recommendation is we'd wait till we got through at least concept review at the Design Review Boards, but certainly, we would be looking for all sorts of avenues to support construction of the project.
Okay. Because I kind of remember when this was a conversation a few years ago, there was some information coming forward, so we just at least keep up to date on what's option, and then figure out where to go. Great. Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Zachary, I was, when you mentioned classes and programs, particularly when it came to the fitness equipment, were you talking about something that was a Parks and Rec-driven nonprofit situation, or is it something that a private contractor would run a class at? How does that work, and how does that work in a public venue like that?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, it would likely be something that would be done under a contract agreement, similar to what we have in many of our other Parks and Recreation facilities, where we have instructors that have agreements, where they are responsible for identifying the students, securing the students, and we have a cost-share agreement. We would determine what hours of operation, what type of activity would be appropriate. Our key goal, really, is to make sure that it wouldn't preclude active, free public use of this park as well. We anticipate that we'll get requests to program the area, because we already have that, where we have fitness professionals that want to see those improvements in city parks, so that they can also bring their clients outdoors.
So when I, for example, when I see people running classes or exercise things at Shoreline Park that look organized and instructed, those are permitted through the Parks and Rec Department currently?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, we have certain areas of different parks that we have that are designated for commercial activities for certain times of day and days of the week. So yes, they should all be permitted.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I realize we're just at a conceptual basis here, but, a level here, but how much more, I'm assuming it'd be more expensive to make it a kind of hybrid thing with a basketball court, plus a fitness area?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, certainly it does affect the cost of the project. Basketball is likely to be slightly more costly than the fitness areas, depending on how they're...
Did you say slightly more costly?
Well, in part, because even with the fitness areas, we need to meet today's accessibility standards, and so you have to, you have to factor in additional infrastructure development than just, you know, plunking a piece of equipment in the grass. That said, in our preliminary run of the numbers, my recollection is it wasn't, might be 10% more if we included a basketball court. But again, these are really preliminary, so wouldn't, wouldn't want to be able to be definitive about actual cost, one or the other.
Yeah, I understand. I would think it might be higher than that, because you've got to have a specially-prepared surface, et cetera, but we'll see. Thank you.
Ms. Maria, and then Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I watched the video of the Parks and Recreation meeting, and you said you didn't get very far in design, because you wanted to know for sure if we were supportive of basketball, I guess is the big question, then. So, but you can put the basketball court farther away from where it would create noise for, I think the Fest Parker would be the closest, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, yes. I actually have a slide that sort of shows how we would shift it, but it's so rudimentary, it might just be easier for me to show right here. There we go. So, if you look at this area, here's where the ball field pole lights are generally located. Our concept plan sort of shows a basketball court in this location. There's the potential to look through the design process to move it closer to the road. That makes sense, so shifting it about 100 feet away, again, this is just a, you know, back of the envelope, we need to sit down and have our consultants do more work, and we prefer to have direction before we do that, so we can best use those resources.
And I heard some discussion of how to control the hours, that you can fold them up, or make them not accessible too early in the morning. I'm wondering when people might go and bounce a basketball and annoy the guests there. And then also, there would not be lighting, so that would discourage people from playing at night, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, I'll answer this question, and Rich Hannah can jump in if I've missed anything. But essentially, you could take the hoops down. So part of what we do, and what we would look at, is what are the program management techniques that we would use to manage the site, in terms of taking the hoops down, there's different techniques. I believe you can either pull even the backboard down, so it can't be moved. The actual height of the hoop is 10 feet, so it's lower than what you might see at a full-size, it is lower than what would be at a full-size basketball court.
Hoops are 10 feet, wherever they are. The hoops are always 10 feet if it's a regular, regulation basketball.
Correct. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, and Councilmember Hotchkiss, the size of the court actually shrinks, but the hoop size stays at 10 feet. And what Ms. Zachary was alluding to is, have the ability to have the entire backboard and structure fold forward to eliminate play at certain times of the day, or actually remove the hoops entirely, and then there'd be no play until we installed the hoops the following day.
And you have staff that are regularly, I remember that was a question at the meeting as well, that people are saying, well, do you have people who will go out there and take care of this? And apparently, you have people on duty to close down parks and that kind of thing.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Maria, we currently have, within our Parks Operations System, staff that do come through and lock up the restrooms in the evening. This would be a function that we would add to that, their regular daily duties. And then at whatever time we designated the courts to be, or the hoops to be installed the following morning, we would move forward with that, and have that be a part of that routine also.
And Mr. Hannah, my final question. Did you discover that there were plenty of other basketball courts, like at the schools and that kind of thing? I don't think, Ms. Zachary, you mentioned that today. Thank you.
Oh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, we did do a survey of courts in the vicinity, and there are courts at elementary schools, Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High, some of which are open for drop-in use after school hours, mostly the junior high and the senior high ones. We do have courts, have courts and courts at Ortega Parks. We have other locations. We look sort of within two miles of the vicinity. I think what we've heard over the years is, is sometimes the location is really important, not that, and having it near the beach has been a desire on the part of members of the community. It's just really challenging to figure out where to put it appropriately.
Mr. Dominguez?
I've got a couple of questions. How much, what's the capacity of the exercise equipment? I know you're conceptual, but is it enough for 10 people to use simultaneously, 20?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, our concept is that we would have the equipment grouped in such a way, for example, 10 pieces of equipment, of which, there were five different ones. So you could have two people next to each other actually using the equipment that might be there, because they're there as drop-in users, it's people that like to exercise together. Or you could have a fitness circuit. So for example, you see in a lot of these gyms, they have these circuits where you go from piece to piece to piece to piece. In our concept plan, I think we show about 10 in this location, and four over here. The idea is that there'd be enough for there to be activity, for up to 10, to a dozen, to maybe 16. It really depends on the layout and how much space we need around them. And until we start selecting the equipment and determining what should go in there, it does take up different amounts of space.
And the meeting, I was at the meeting that you staffed at the park, and there were about 25 people, and most of those people were users of the exercise equipment that we currently have? Is that correct? Did I remember that correctly?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, yes, we had, we have a number of people that are part of a group called Santa Barbara Bar Life that use the equipment at Dwight Murphy. It's very different equipment. It's more strength-based bars, it's actually been around for quite a while. But yes, they were already engaged in that activity.
And the source of the funding, is that general fund money?
Yes, the source right now is general fund.
So if we didn't put the basketball court there, we could put it at another location, use some of the money, and just kind of partition it?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, it really depends, I would imagine, on council's desire, but also the cost to renovate the park as a whole. council's desire, but also the cost to renovate the park as a whole. A good portion of the costs really are not 100% related to these additional recreation options. So the infrastructure improvements that we need to make, the irrigation improvements, the expansion of the sidewalks, the fencing, all of that, you know, we have some field improvements that we would also be doing to the active ball field area. That all ties into the total cost of the project.
They're not restricted funds, but there's some synergy. Okay.
This is the area, I'm sorry, were you, was that it? Or did you have another question?
I think that was it. Thanks.
Okay. This area is covered under community development block grants, correct? Is that if there was capital funding through CDBG, it could be used at this location?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we have actually used CDBG funds on two separate occasions already at this park for both the fencing and the drainage improvements. It, it could be, the maps recently changed, so I'd have to double check because different communities moved in and out of the areas and so we have different parks that are now eligible that weren't before and ones that were that now aren't. So I'd have to double check that.
Okay, that'd be good to know. Okay. All right, let's move to public comment. We have a couple of minutes here on the podium. We'll start with Ed Cavassos to be followed by Pete Del Bello. Welcome.
Hi. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Ed Cavassos with the Parks and Rec Commission. As you saw, this came to us in October and I think we all agreed that regardless of which option we go with, that park's going to be great. I think staff did a great job. We were all excited about, about the possibilities and then it all fell apart because we couldn't come to a consensus. We locked three to three. When it became obvious that it wasn't going to be feasible to look at multiple design options, came back to us in December and as you saw, it went 6-1 in favor of basketball. For the record, I am not a basketball fan. I have not ever been a basketball fan, but I am the one that made the motion in favor of it because I believe as a recreation option, it presents something that the city's been asking for. One of the comments that one of my fellow commissioners made, Ms. Longstreet, was that she's been hearing about a, a call for a basketball court for 20 years and that just always resonated to me. I know the, the noise option, we're all sensitive to that, but one of the things that didn't hold water for me and I think some of the other council commissioners was, you know, when you look at where it's at, you've got Cabrillo there, you've got the train tracks, you've got the ocean. Yes, there is a, as, you know, concern for the noise, but I just don't think that it, it made that much of a, a concern that we couldn't get there and I think the, the vote that you saw represents that as well.
Thank you and thank you for your work on this. Pete Del Bello will be followed by Orlando Guerra.
Hi there, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Pete Del Bello and as you all know, I'm a Santa Barbara native. I've followed the, the Cabrillo Ball Field project since it was introduced at the Neighborhood Advisory Council and I support both the basketball court and the family fitness area, both the basketball court and the family fitness area. I remember the days before the dugouts were thankfully fenced in in January of 2011. The darkness of this beautiful park has had a history of drug dealing and prostitution. What saddens me is that this park, most likely to please the nearby hotels, is always dark at night unless there's a ballgame. For example, at 9:20 PM, the lights are on at Ortega Park, the lights are on at Eastside Park, the lights are on at other local parks, but not at the Cabrillo Ball Field. Thus, the darkness puts the safety of children, women and men at safe, their safety at risk. As a member of the, unfortunately, I can't, did not write down the person's name, but a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Council recommended that there should be pedestrian lighting around the track, around the whole park for safety issues. I think this would be important. I know that, like I said, that the lights are probably not on because to please the hotels, but while I welcome our tourists with wel, with open arms, we must remember that this park is, does not belong to, is not owned by the hotels. It's owned by the people of Santa Barbara, the people that are here 365 days a year, the people that live here, work here, and their taxes support this city 365 days a year. Thank you for your time.
Orlando Guerra and Sharon Byrne, you're waving your two minutes to him. Okay. And then Leslie Wiscombe will be the final speaker. So you have up to four minutes.
Oh, thank you. Madam Mayor, member of the council. My name's Orlando Guerra. I've met some of you before prior, probably the last couple of years, so I've been in the youth athletics forum for about 21, I'm on my 21st year. So seeing the improvements of the field that, what, what the Rec Department is proposing, I really like the idea of the fitness and I've talked to a few of you about that, but I've been there and I've shown a couple of you pictures like on an 80-degree day on a Sunday and it's just empty. I think with the fitness, I'm in the fitness industry as well as the sports industry. It's really imperative that I support the youth to the fullest. And for me, to see the baseball get improved, it's our softball, but I have some questions to the Rec. I don't know if I have to put, use that in another forum regarding the safety issues, but when I had checked around, I've been to Santa Monica, they use the Greenfield equipment and actually I walked around, I was in my street clothes, people were working out, it was probably around noon on a Tuesday and it was absolutely packed. So I took it upon myself to interview some people there and they, they said it's, it's busy till sundown and it's, it's being used from morning until night. So there's constant traffic and you see the traffic that goes through it. Madam Mayor, I spoke to you about, you know, there's hundreds of people that come through there, but it's like a city college, okay? You look at city college, there's no fitness equipment there, there's a track and stairs and hundreds of people a day go through that. I do it myself. I train there myself. I see people exercising, having fun and, you know, those people, I'm sure they would come out to the fields. So my thing is, is, is in support of that. I really like the idea. I, I was a member of MCA since 2012. I came to them with this idea, not knowing that you guys were proposing that. So I'm in support of it and the baseball field had a question on how far are those fences once you push the, the, are you pushing the home plate up because you're going to make some adjustments back on, behind the home plate?
You can address that as we can ask afterwards.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So those are my concerns. If it pushes up that field, I think that fence would be around 300 feet, so that's pretty much the minimum if you're going to expand the field because some guys are going to play hardball there. The homerun fence is a great idea because it's a safety issue. So balls got, being hit or people are exercising or walking, they'll, they'll hit the fence and they won't. It won't. I've seen it happen before. At Pershing, I've seen it, but I support it. I've seen, my wife just got back from South America and she knows I'm into it, so she took a couple of pictures in Lima, Peru and there was a fitness station right on the beach, being used and free to, free to have, for everybody. So I thank you for your time, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Wiscombe and then Robert Burke will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Leslie Wiscombe, Parks and Recreation Commission and I'm the sole commissioner who does not support a basketball court in this park because I believe that all of the project's objectives are fulfilled by play mounds and some may fail to be fulfilled by installation of a basketball court. The three objectives that raised my concerns are, number one, expanding recreation opportunities. While either feature fulfills this objective, the court may actually become a noisy element interfering with other park activities. And while the basketball court provides an active recreation component, the play mounds can be used for both active and passive recreation. Number two is promoting park safety. Given the restrictive size of the developable area, errant basketballs may cause safety concerns for other park users. And three, enhancing park aesthetics. This park with the chromatic gate is one of the gateways to our city and I believe the colored court would compete with the, with the aesthetic of the chromatic gate while the play mounds will complement it. I also believe that there's several practical reasons to support the play, play mounds over the basketball court. Number one, staff concedes that basketball noise comes from shouting and not bouncing balls. With hotel rooms and residences surrounding the site, the noise from the court may put the DBAs over acceptable limits. Number two, in an area where drainage has been historically challenged, well-designed play mounds can provide an opportunity to advantageously direct stormwater. And three, finally, staff's inventory of the existing courts indicate 19 full courts and four half courts within a two-mile radius. The majority of the, of these courts are open after school. So for those reasons, I support the play mounds and the fitness equipment and not the basketball. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Burke?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, this is spontaneous combustion. I did not review or research this. I think what is true for the parks is especially this one, since it's such a small one and all the other posted stamp-sized parks in the city, or the ones that I'm thinking of like McKenzie Park, are for all people, all the time, everywhere. And there has not been a policy decision, and maybe this can be considered a policy decision, to allow part of the park, 10%, to be allowed for nature use and that's it. For example, like in this one, we could construct a bird hotel. I mean, these have happened before where it's, you know, you have 20, 30 places for birds to roost on, on a seasonal basis. And what happens, the history that I'm aware of, is that they come in, they argue and then the next year they usually got, you know, turf rights handled. The other is the emphasis is on activity. How about something sedentary? How about something for geezers? I'm a geezer, so I use the word. So I'm thinking like chess tables or something where you can sit and, you know, something not as active. The problem, given the history of the park with the alcohol and other use, this might be a challenge, but it's something that I would like the Recreation Department to consider and maybe you could give them directions, say, well, let's think about this. And also, you know, let's consider other, you know, given the tenor of my speech, let's talk about other than humans habitating the park. Thanks.
Okay, it's to the council. Do you want to answer that question about the fence that was brought up?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, just to, to speak to the fence, there's no plan to move the home plate. The homerun fence would exceed from home plate about 300 feet out, which is in line with where the existing ball field lights currently are. The fence would be about six feet high, which is consistent with what you see at City College right now for their home games. So it wouldn't be so high that it would look like a normal, you know, what you would see at a traditional ballpark, but would provide that delineation between the active space and the areas outside of that. And the fence is also not designed to fully enclose the park, so there will be openings between the foul lines on the softball field and the, the homerun fence would just be the perimeter arc for delineation.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hart?
Well, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and, and the deliberations with the Neighborhood Advisory Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm sure everybody knows that I have an interest in basketball going back a long time and it's, it's been very difficult to find a location that's suitable. I think Ms. Zachary spoke to that, that there, it, there's not a lot of space in the beach and in the waterfront for a basketball court and this is one of the few locations where it's possible. I know there's some design issues that have yet to be worked out, but it's encouraging to see that there is a, an option here for that to, to at least continue through the design phase. So I think really what we're looking for from the council is that question, should there be a basketball court in this park as a potential going down the road and going down that path? And I, for one, think that anything that enhances recreational activity provides more recreational outlets for citizens of the city in the waterfront is a good thing. I think that the skateboard park is the best example of that and it was an incredibly controversial, hard-fought effort to put that skateboard park in at the time. It bounced around conceptually and physically for years around the city and many, many people at rest, raised the exact same concerns about it, noise, safety, aesthetics. I think it's an absolute homerun. It is a signature facility. It really puts, I think, our values in line with our investment financially and the commitment to do that for our community. And I think this is a very similar issue in just a much smaller scale.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. May I start with a question, Ms. Zachary? I thought part of the discussion at the December Parks and Recreation Commission meeting was about whether child's area could be accommodated. What I understood is that adult fitness and a basketball court would squeeze it out or it might not be appropriate for really small children. Children are pretty hardy. I could see them going with their parents to the workout area, making themselves busy in the grassy area, but, you know, a programmed area. What, what do you remember of that conversation, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, when we look at trying to put three different activities in this space, it's really a challenge to find a way to do it that makes a lot of sense. And so our recommendation is that if we did go with, with looking at basketball and adult fitness, it would be challenging to also incorporate a small children's play area. Not that children don't find ways to play on their own. We do have a full ball field that, not necessarily for small children, but if we design it with a homerun fence, we can enhance the use of the area for soccer. We did also consider that in the vicinity of this park, we have three other playgrounds, all of which cater to some extent to small children. Dwight Murphy, East Beach and Chase Palm Park. And two of those are brand-new playgrounds and, and at Dwight Murphy at some point, we always renew our playgrounds and we're always making sure we reach a broad cross-section of children age groups. So our thought is we have a lot of that in the area already and that perhaps this would be an appropriate different use for our city park.
Thank you. I admire Ms. Wiscombe very much and, and acknowledge your thoughtful observations on the situation. I, I do support however, a basketball court and the adult fitness going there. It seems like the hotels are benefiting from our number one draw, which is the Pacific Ocean and perhaps the hotel guests would come and play some basketball. I can, I can totally see that. I'm persuaded also by the Neighborhood Advisory Council recommendations overwhelmingly for basketball. I've served as the liaison to that group. There are some very hardy eastside residents who know what their families and their teenagers need and a basketball court would be it. Mr. Del Bello was also well-spoken about the parks are, are for the people and I think sometimes we have a tension here of accommodating tourism and accommodating our locals. I think our local people need this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Dominguez?
So I'm really excited about the department adding more opportunities and facilities to the city's holdings. We do a really good job now and I'm excited to see more, especially coming out of a recession and some, some hard times where we were worried about reserves and infrastructure and we still are, but the ability to take care of our, our population, particularly revolving around health because health is our, our number one asset and unfortunately, we live in a, in a culture where people are working too hard and aren't playing enough. So anything we can do to get people outdoors and, and active and try to lessen the impact of diabetes, which is becoming a, a very big problem, or is a big problem. So I'm, I'm really excited about this. I'm excited about basketball in general. I'm a, I'm a basketball player. I've played organized basketball with a team at tournaments and I've played street ball and I'm excited about fitness equipment because I've also used fitness equipment and I need to do more of both. Regarding basketball, I'd like to make sure wherever we put our courts, we get the most bang for our bucks, so it sounds like this could be an expensive endeavor because of the drainage. I also want to make sure that the basketball courts are in a best-case usage where people who will use them are nearby because in my experience with basketball, you won't go play unless it's nearby. So if we're talking about youth and it sounds like a lot of people envision these courts for youth, you want to have them where kids can walk from their home under supervision, where their parents can, can step out and check out where the kids are. And it sounds like, right now, our most popular usage is Ortega Park where there are several courts. And I'd like to see potentially a study of adding either another court there or some of the other places. So the new, the tennis park, I know we're going to do some work there, so if we're talking about synergy and planning and construction, maybe it's possible to put a court or half court there. That's very close to some high-density housing in Santa That's very close to some high-density housing in Santa Barbara, and it's far from, we don't have a map, do we have the other courts? I know it was presented at the commission hearing, and there it is. So there's no courts down near where the tennis court park is. Would you be able to point out where the tennis court park is on that map?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it's in this location down here.
So it would be easily accessible for the people off Salinas there. And there's a lot of apartment buildings there. It's an R4 area, lot of kids. There's four thousand students, K through twelve, on the east side district. And you can see most of the courts are along one line, so to add a court down there would make it easier for people to walk to. The area that's green and below the freeway is just not very residential. That's the area I live in, so I know I've actually walked around and talked to my neighbors about this. I attended the October fifteenth workshop at the park. I watched the Parks and Rec Commission. I also was present at the meeting. I was the only one present at the meeting where the stakeholders talked about basketball. And I actually haven't talked to a single basketball player who wants a court at the beach. That doesn't mean there's not plenty of people out there. And I would certainly play there if we put it up. But, you know, my job on the council is not to do what's good for me. It's what's good for the community, and particularly with the east side, with the four thousand students, what's good for them. One of the unique things about streetball is nothing stinks more than when you get dressed up, you get your ball, you dribble over the court, and there's no one else there. So what I don't like about this particular location is you would never know if there was a game going on until you got there, as opposed to the other five red dots. Ideally, people probably come from within three or four blocks to play there, and so kids can step outside and draft their parents to accompany them to the park and play. The other leveraging, particularly with Ortega Park, is we want to try to get more families there. I know usage has been down at certain times of the park. And having more people there is great, because you have tipping points with parks. And we want to get more families. When I walked and knocked on doors in that neighborhood, there was a lot of security concerns, there were arrests made at the park, and I want to really see a return of families to the parks. So I think having more basketball courts there would accomplish that goal as well. And I want to make sure we're leveraging, and what I think leverage as well is the fitness equipment with the youth and the playmounds. Not only in terms of who's actually going to be using it, you also have the fitness lanes along the beach. A lot of bikers and runners would detour over and use the equipment. It's visible from those paths. And again, I walk or run, mostly walk by there every day. I walk my dog down there. And there's lots of people running and biking along there, and I think they would deviate there to use this equipment. They probably wouldn't stop and play basketball. That's not really a dovetailed use. I think people could do yoga at the park, and that would be another use that's very popular in Santa Barbara, as you all know. And people are doing yoga at lots of parks. So I think yoga is a compatible use with the fitness equipment and people going there with their kids. So the main concern is that we get the best bang for our buck. I think we need more basketball courts in Santa Barbara, definitely more in the east side. But I want to make sure they're near where people can walk and get there. I'd like to see the Parks and Rec staff maybe take a look at the age of people using the basketball courts and their transportation, how far they're coming from. Are they walking or biking, or are their parents dropping them off? Are their parents coming with them? Because my guess is that's going to be an obstacle for our youth using these courts, because you can't watch your kids from your window, or have your comadre or your aunt watch the kids from the window. So that's a concern of really getting maximal usage. Also, we have potential impact on our neighbors, and I talked to the residents on Milpus and the businesses on Milpus and representatives from Fest Parker, and they're concerned about the usage, the noise. So that's another thing that I think would influence me to ask staff to find more courts over in the areas where we have more of our youth. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think Mr. Dominguez makes a good point about properly locating the basketball sites. The one thing that, I was listening to Mr. Hart and others, they all make good points, and it sounds like a home run. And then the closer I watch it, I start to see the home run turn foul and go. The reason is, so that you understand why I say that, is that playing basketball and yoga and Tai Chi are not compatible. One asks for quiet and focused concentration, as does, I think, really diligent use of athletic equipment. I mean, you're, you know, the stuff of the year, they're building your muscles or whatever. Basketball is a, I live near a court. It's a loud occupation, and it's not just, and I'm not against basketball players, Greg, please don't misunderstand, it can be get pretty exciting, as in throw me the ball you, and that doesn't work with Tai Chi and yoga and stuff. It's just, so I think, you know, it sounds like we'd like to have our cake and eat it too, and I don't think we can here. And the second thing is, the, I like the figures that Mr. Dominguez cited about how many youth we have there, and it's great. And locally, I'm sure there is interest in having another court wherever we put it. But is this going to be a local park, or is it going to be a citywide park? And I think if we broaden the use in the sense of focusing on the exercise area, we get people that run from the mesa down along the beach. This would be a perfect place to take that halfway break and start doing some, whatever you do, you know, do a circuit and some intense exercises, and then head back on your run. In other words, it really becomes a citywide area, not just a local one. And I'd like it to be both, if that's possible. So although, I mean, it really does sound, well, let's have both, it sounds like that would be a home run. I think when you examine it carefully, they really don't, it doesn't really work that way. And I know I had my grandson living with me for a while, and his, my daughter, his mother would go for exercise, and this is a whole new area for me, but, you know, recovering from childbirth, et cetera, people do bring their little kids, and they actually, little guys fall asleep in their prams, and the mothers are working out, et cetera. And again, that's a use that I think works with the exercise area, but somehow is a conflict with the basketball. So I hope Mr. Hart doesn't object too much if I suggest that basketball might not be the right place here, but I really don't think it is, and it would be a much better, totally unique area if we dedicated it to a exercise area as described in. We've got nineteen other basketball sites. I don't think we need a twentieth one here. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Dwight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this has been a good discussion, or being one. And I think that this map is helpful in terms of us discussing where a basketball court should be. That's the edge issue of this. Certainly, the adult, the fitness activities is, I think, has, it sounds like that's got consensus here. I, for one, am skeptical about the basketball court. I appreciate Mr. Dominguez's raising the issues of location, that is to say, this is definitely a tourist part of town, and we all go there as well, but it's not in a neighborhood. I appreciate the point you made about the muni, which is definitely one of my real interests, is getting that project up and running. And I understand there's a bit of momentum generating there. That's really exciting. And there are, of course, opportunities for not just a court, but a single hoop. I mean, there's that, that element is one that gets people to have some fun and be able to make use of their, practice their skills and so forth. Even Dwight Murphy, to me, works better, because that's a place where there's going to be a lot more people that will converge from time to time, and while you're waiting for your chance or whatever, again, it's easy for us to sit here and throw these ideas out, and I can just imagine everybody going, "Oh, my God, can you imagine adding yet another use to that area?" But anyway, that notion of it being neighborhood-centric works for me better. And certainly where the schools have already done, at least some schools have done a good job of doubling up on those uses, and availing those hoops to the public is something to be continued. I mean, our schools are, in most situations, the primary community open space. And so to the extent that we're able to make a better use of those, I think it's a good idea. The other piece that I would, Shoreline, that's another one, I can just, again, head-holdering, "Oh, my God, where are you going to put a basketball hoop there?" But a single hoop even could work. I appreciated the point that was made about pedestrian lighting, and just where, it doesn't need to be everywhere all the time kind of thing, but to the extent that that's folded into the plan, and there's an opportunity to enhance that, I'd ask that you give that consideration. So I think that's the summary of my thoughts at this point.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Zachary, what's the parking situation? Is there a long-term parking along Calle Puerto Vallarta? Who's that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ross. Yeah, if I could just show you here, there is parking on both sides of Calle Puerto Vallarta with some limitations, obviously, for the driveway for the hotel and the intersections. There is some parking along Milpus, there's not a lot. And we do also have a beachfront parking lot that's part of the Cabrillo Pavilion East Beach area. And then there's street parking along the south side of Cabrillo Boulevard. There is a small parking lot, which is just off the map here as well. So we anticipate there's fairly adequate parking. There are times, obviously, when there's higher use in the area for any number of reasons, whether it's a beachfront activity, a beautiful day, an activity in the ballpark, where parking is going to change depending on how active the whole area is. But there's no designated parking for this park.
Right. And this is true with any ball sport. As I look at having a basketball court down in the wedge part of the park, I just think about the ability for the ball to go on the boulevard on either side. So that would be an issue. I don't know if you had planned to have any kind of restraint, fencing, or landscaping that might impede a ball going all the way to the streets on either side or not. What I'm hearing is 100% support, at least for the fitness area. I think everybody's on board with that, and I would like to maximize that. I'm a big fan of basketball as well. Would love to see more facilities. I think there's a lot of great Southern California coastal cities that include basketball courts that are kind of iconic, actually, in places like Santa Monica, Newport Laguna. I'm also conscious of the stakeholders, and the stakeholders being the hotels who do pay a ton of TOT into our system and provide for other programs around the city. One speaker did mention a good point, however. You have the railroad, you have the Cabrillo Boulevard, and you have the ocean, so there are other parts of ambient noise. Basketball does have, tend to have its own unique sound with the bouncing of a ball. There's just, there's no getting around it. So I'm a little ambivalent, but I do support doing something with that normally blighted part of the park. I do completely support the idea of having fitness equipment there. I think that's a great idea. I'm not so sure it's the very best place to wedge in a basketball facility as well. I'd love to see some basketball down by the beach. I know Mr. Hart fought for this years ago, and I think it's a good idea. I'm just not so sure, design-wise, if we wedge it in there for making the best, absolute best use of that area, or if we could expand the fitness area, child play area. And I'm thinking about people who might be here visiting, that might be here staying with children to go across, work out, be with their kids in a relatively contained area. Physically, can you fit the basketball court in there and have it work? It kind of looks like it. But I sure like to see other options as well. I think that would be, yeah, I think that would be the best. So, yeah, I'm struggling with the basketball court. You know, I want to see basketball at the beach. I'm just not so sure that this is the exact space. No, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, were you yes or no on basketball? I know you were yes on basketball throughout the city, close to people's neighborhood, but I wasn't quite sure if I got if you meant at this location.
I'm 100% for basketball courts, just not at this location.
Not at this location.
And has the department looked at other locations on the beach, like Sea Landing or Shoreline?
Oh, Mr. Hart's light's gone. Why don't you go right ahead? Why don't you give some historical context, Mr. Hart?
I don't know where to start. The short answer to your question is yes. Staff has looked extensively, exhaustively, frustratingly, to the point where I don't think there is any other location. And so it's really, if you're interested in a basketball court on the beach, this is the place that is available for that. And I don't think staff would disagree and would say they've looked very hard. I suspect, you know, Councilmember White mentioned Shoreline Park. I don't think that would fly. In fact, I know that wouldn't fly. That's a lot closer to residential neighborhoods than this would. And so Cabrillo Boulevard is a very busy street. If you stand there, that's all you can hear. You know, if you could, if it was quiet and there weren't cars going by, you'd hear the ocean, or you'd hear Milpus Street, or you'd hear Calle Puerto Vallarta. You know, basketball, there is a basketball court on the Fest Parker property, there's tennis courts on the Fest Parker property. I don't think it's truly an issue about noise.
That's what I was, okay. I thought this would be, by the time it got to me, I'd know where you'd want, but I, first off, let me thank staff and everyone for going through this process. And this is an area, it is overdue in terms of upgrading. And I think we've slowly been incrementally upgrading the facility with restoring the chromatic gate with around the ballfields and the restrooms and the fencing. That was a, it was a problem spot for a while. And I know you're focusing also on the drainage and things around now, also lighting in lower Milpus. And so there's a lot happening in this area that is long overdue. And I think the main component in terms of the Cabrillo ballfields, when it was a problem hotspot, was it had activity, but not the kind of activity we wanted to promote. So if we could create something that's nice and welcoming and create that activity around the area, that would change the type of activity around the area, that would help. And so I think in the work that we've done to date has been moving in that correct direction. And certainly, adult fitness areas, I think we all agree that that is, that fits within that trajectory. I, my first year on council, I got to go to our sister city of Way High, China, and right there on the beach, they have fitness equipment like that, and it was a lot of fun, and I actually kind of like that comparison. I don't know, we saw Dingle earlier, so I guess I'm thinking of sister cities, but, so certainly, and I don't think there's been any question about the adult fitness component. So on the basketball court, I guess my question first is, because we seem kind of, we seem divided, we are divided up here. In terms of next steps moving forward, you would go with an RFP, you would look at what options are available. How much more are we looking at in terms of cost of putting out an RFP with both options? And because I think some of the questions I'm hearing is, does it fit in that small amount of space? How does that relate to all the other activity? Where would it go? How does the ADA access happen? So, you know, would that be too much of an added cost in terms of a design concept when we go out to bid, or however, whatever your next process would be?
Madam Mayor and council members, we haven't even initiated the design review process. So what, from the staff standpoint, we believe is necessary is to have a project that we put into the system that then goes to design review rather than to design options. We would, we currently have a landscape architect and engineer under contract. Their next step is to further develop the concept plan so that we could submit the project as a development project to the city. And the first step in that would be going to the Historic Landmarks Commission for their design review and seeing whether at the concept level, there was support for the design of the project. And at that point, if we could get further along, we'd actually be submitting our application for a coastal development permit. So from the department's standpoint, we would prefer to have a project to move forward with a design versus multiple designs, so that design review bodies can review it at that level.
Okay. I mean, I guess this is where I come down, is, first off, I'm kind of surprised of not as much email traffic on this issue than I would have thought, given all the outreach, which made me think that we got to a consensus, that there wasn't that much of a, I mean, made me think that we got to a consensus, that there wasn't that much of a, I mean, there were still questions and concerns, but believe me, there's plenty of other items that would come to us. And I just frankly have not received that much correspondence lately on this. And so, given that basketball made it through the Parks and Rec Commission, went through the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, that kind of feedback, it seems to make sense. And especially given the history of trying to find a location, you know, if we, I guess if we do want to look at some area to have basketball down by the beach, and we've tried once and again to look at certain areas that just didn't work, then if we want something, this is really, maybe not the optimal option, but the option that's available to us. I'm also reminded before, way before I was on council, and I think, Mr. Hart, you were probably on during the skate park, and, you know, the concerns and the what was going to happen with the noise and people there and the activity. And actually, it is an amazing part of the beachfront area. And as long as it's monitored correctly, and they had its issues here and there, but it is a component, and I think a very good one, of the whole waterfront area. So the fear factor of the unknown upfront, I think I understand, but seeing that happen and as long as it's managed correctly, as this would be, makes sense. I would not support lighting around the basketball court area for activity at night. It's different with the softball field, it's a whole different rhythm than the basketball court would be. And especially going through a coastal development permit, and I know Malibu had a whole issue about lights at a basketball court that took years. We don't want to go down that path. So, you know, so I'm okay today with moving forward with the court, given that it's a smaller scale, as long as it fits, because I think we want to make sure the adult fitness component of it sticks. And if the basketball court becomes a problem in its design, then we have to readdress it. But if we think we can do both, I'd rather do the and as opposed to the either or, given the community discussion up to this point. I appreciate my colleagues' concerns here and there, and I think we just need to continue with the process to see how it goes. And that, it seems to me, given the community dialogue up to this point, it makes sense to include both. So that's where I fall on this. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to include a basketball court and adult fitness area at Cabrillo Ballpark in an effort to create basketball recreation opportunities for our youth, adults, and tourists.
Okay, moved by Maria, second by Hart. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If this motion does prevail, I would ask that the concept of moving it away from the, of moving it southward be looked at carefully.
I include that in my motion.
Hey, Mr. Hart, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, because we're looking at exactly one configuration. And I think there are concerns. I mean, there could be different positioning, there could be landscaping, there could be a lot of options that would go into place to protect, I mean, the balls from escaping onto these two boulevards, as well as maybe some potential ambient noise. So I think, but I don't know, because you need to go forward with a project, Zachary, as opposed to an amorphous, I mean, you have to have it, is this the configuration you'd go forward with, or how does that necessarily work?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, no, we have more concept planning to do before we're ready to move forward. And your meeting today, the meetings that we've had with the commission and the advisory council, feedback that we've gotten from our stakeholders, give us a lot of information to work with. We just want to gather it all in one place before we direct our consultants to actually spend the time on the design.
Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez.
Before the staff goes through the RFP process, and I'm not sure how much time and expense that adds, and maybe that's something you can comment on, but is there any interest in looking at the alternative locations and the costs? So, for example, people have mentioned Dwight Murphy and the tennis park before they go to the process of the RFP?
I think if this motion fails, that might be, well, even if it passes, you could, I mean, there could also be review other areas for basketball courts, if we want to give staff that direction to do so. But Ms. Zachary, I think, when was the last time this has been reviewed in terms of adding a basketball, I mean, I think the difference is in what Mr. Hart was trying to say, is those areas may be good areas for basketball courts in the future, but they're not at the waterfront. And so, I think that was the main component of this particular location, because it was at the waterfront. Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah. But have you looked at options, other options, locations lately?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we did have that discussion generally, very conceptually at the staff level. We are about to engage on updating our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And one of our objectives with that master plan is to comprehensively look at all of our existing facilities and all of the different desires we have in the community, whether it's basketball or another skate park, or whether it's a multi-sport court or pickleball, so that we could look at how to balance all those different community desires throughout our park system, rather than just tackling one recreation topic at a time. So that's sort of where we've landed, is before we start trying to fix one idea without considering the others, we really need more of a master plan to look at. And just to speak to the RFP question, the next request for proposal that we would issue would be for the final design and construction of the project. We're about six months out from doing that, because we need to get to a point where we actually have a permit in hand that indicates we have a project to build. So we already have our design consultants for the preliminary concepts under contract and working on behalf of the city. And their work effort will take us through Planning Commission. Then we would get to the next phase, where we do the final design, construction drawings, then we'd go out to bid for construction. So it's kind of a three-step process. We're in step one. That helps in terms of where we are.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, I believe it's going to be a split vote, so why don't we do a roll call?
Can I?
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Ask one other question? And again, this is because I wasn't privy to the earlier discussions on council regarding basketball and the meetings I've attended, and even today, I haven't seen a single basketball player stand up and say, I want basketball courts at the beach. And it sounds to me like you're saying there's a ton of demand for basketball at the beach, which is great. And again, like I said, I'll be standing there in line to play if there's a line and there's demand. But I just want to make sure I understand that there's been a presentation of evidence in the past that shows there's a significant cohort in the community that wants to use these courts.
Hart?
I could have had 300 people in this room, but I think that it's more important just to have the council thoughtfully consider this. This has got a lot of history, and it's essentially a question about what's the value of the waterfront for active recreation. There's lots of passive recreation in the waterfront, there aren't that many active recreation opportunities. This is in addition to that, and there are not physically many spaces, because, you know, the limitations on turning passive park space into active park space is very limited. This is a unique location, because it's the edge of the ball field, it's underutilized. It's an active park that has an underutilized area in it that makes it a good candidate for an intensification of use without changing the fundamental nature of the park. Whereas, if you were to do that in Shoreline Park, you'd be changing that balance in a more significant way. The same thing occurred in the discussion when it was at Leadbetter Park. West Beach is another idea that folks have had, but the Coastal Commission wouldn't let us pave over the sand. So if you kind of go through systematically all the locations in the waterfront where you might possibly have this, there's one reason or another why those have not been successfully pursued. And this is kind of the last opportunity.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Well, this is a plenty of active park, and there are plenty of basketball courts around, and I just don't think, no matter where we locate the basketball court, next to the adult fitness center, that they work. It's one hybrid that is just incompatible. So no matter where we put it, I'm just going to have to vote no. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dominguez. Hart. Hotchkiss.
No.
Maria.
Aye.
Rouse.
Aye.
White.
No.
Mayor Schneider.
No, I'm going to vote aye, thank you. Okay, so, good luck with that. Yeah. Okay. Item number, do you want to, I need a little five-minute break, so let's take a five-minute break. And item number 10. If you can read item number 10, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Request for ad hoc committee appointment for Streets Fund.
Okay, Ms. Bjork.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Rebecca Bjork, the Public Works Director, and with me today is Chris Toth, who is now our Transportation Division Manager. So we're here today to talk to you about Streets funding, and I'll explain why the Streets is in quotation marks, and request an appointment of an ad hoc committee to give input to staff. We will talk briefly about what we spend our Streets revenues for, take a look at our current revenue projections, particularly with regard to what we had planned to receive revenues, and then seek a recommendation. So what is funded with Streets revenues? I thought it was important for the council to understand the breadth of work that we do with these dedicated revenues. We, in roadways, we fund street tree maintenance, median and landscape maintenance, sidewalks, street lights, traffic signals, striping and curb painting, street sweeping, and bridges. In the right-of-way, we do graffiti abatement, garbage removal, collect shopping carts, help with cleaning up of encampments, supply portable toilets, and do special event setups for parades and other special events. We maintain the entire storm drain infrastructure, the catch basins, the pipelines, the pump station, and we are responsible for the fees for the permit, the NPDS permit. And we also have other significant programs for traffic engineering, making sure that our roadways are safe through the careful engineering of how they're used, development review for transportation-related issues, capital program management by the engineering staff for our Streets capital program work, transit and shuttle bus program funding, which is Easy Lift and the Downtown Shuttle, and also transportation planning for both our long-range and alternative transportation planning efforts. So it's a, when we talk about Streets funding, I just wanted people to be aware that we're talking about more than just roads. And, there we go. So to give you an idea, we knew that we were in trouble with Streets funding on an ongoing basis, and we had talked about that extensively with council as we looked at infrastructure last year, but the picture's getting worse, not better. And what I'm showing up here, although it's a complicated chart, what I want to call your attention to is two things. This is our budgeted number, this is how much money we thought we'd have coming in. Pretty much across the board, we're seeing a decrease. This is a small revenue, and unfortunately, the reason it's increasing is that we, this is where we book money that we get for damage. So there's a corresponding increase in cost that explains that increase there. So between what we had expected for revenue in 2016, we're looking at about $300,000 shortfall. And then when you look between the expected for '17 at $13,909,000 and $13,404,000, it's another $500,000 shortfall. And if we had added in '15, which I didn't show here, over those three years, it's about a $1 million shortfall out of that 13 and a half million budget. So substantial portion of that budget reduction. So that has just increased the urgency of trying to come up with a plan to stretch those dollars we have as far as possible and see what we, how we can better manage and fund money for our capital. This isn't a local problem. State and nationally, you will hear it on the news very frequently. California, the gas tax is expected to provide about $2.8 billion statewide. The estimate for road need, road and highway need, is $8 billion. So as a state, we are severely, have a severe shortfall. The gas tax for this year is projected to decline 21% and an additional 8% in fiscal year '17. There is a lot of discussion of this at the legislature, and the governor has a proposal right now that would increase funding. But to put that in perspective, if it's successful, we would get another $483,000, which is not really even enough to offset the declines that we're experiencing. So to give you a picture of the magnitude of the revenues or how they come in, UUT, or Utility Users Tax, is our largest revenue. Measure A, which is the sales tax increment, is the next largest, and that one's actually performing as projected, pretty well. And then gas tax is an important increment, but not performing well. And UUT is also off, I don't know that I mentioned, it's off $300,000 this year and projected to be off next year as well. This is the snapshot of expenditures by major salary item, or, excuse me, by major budget item. And I think the main thing I want to call out here is that an awful lot of our funds are caught up in salaries and benefits, so it's, we don't have much going into supplies and services, so we're really stretched thin. Allocated costs are the costs that we pay to other departments for the work that they do on behalf of Streets, fleet, facilities, and overhead, that type of thing. Special projects, this looks big, but it's actually broken up into a lot of smaller places, including the money that goes to Easy Lift, street sweeping, just because that's managed in a separate fund, the shuttle bus program, and then the transfer to park for the street tree maintenance. And I'm sorry, on that slide, I also wanted to point out, we do have $4 million budgeted for capital this year and in progress. We had planned to use reserves. We are actually planning to use more reserves than we thought, because our revenues are coming in low. But, so I would just want to point out that that $3,900,000 is only at that point because of the use of reserves. If without reserves, we'd be looking more like $2,600,000. And then this is operation by budget program. So this is just taking a look at what we do, the actual work we do with those. The Transportation Administration is large, because that's where our overhead allocations come out of. But you can see roadway maintenance, graffiti abatement, storm drain repair. Storm drain repair is actually a place that we're quite concerned about. There is very little money going into our storm drains. Doesn't appear to have been done, anything significant done for storm drain capital and infrastructure in the last decade, and we really have no money identified to put into that resource. Two years ago, council did give us a one-time $500,000 allocation for Lugana Pump Station. We have used that for some very basic repairs, but we haven't even begun to touch the renewal of that infrastructure. And that's critical infrastructure for us. So this is a snapshot of how we're spending the money. So what do we think the picture looks like if we wanted to be funding it fully? And this illustration is just to show you how much we think we are off. The bottom bar is our operating costs, so those are the costs that we're paying for operating. And that includes the transfers out and the pass-through to MTD and things like that, excuse me, only for the Easy Lift. Then there's a small reserve amount, and we don't actually have that reserve currently, but we think it would be prudent to have at least a little bit of money in reserves in case something happens that's unplanned. And that's at 5%. And then 3.9% is what we had budgeted this year for capital, and we have currently budgeted 3.2% for next year, but we will be looking at that to see whether or not we can actually afford that. In order to get our street condition back to the pavement condition index of 70, which is what the city's goal, adopted goal is, we believe we need to invest $16 million a year for the next three years, just in street paving. And then thereafter, we would need to invest $8 million a year on an ongoing basis, and obviously, that would need to be adjusted for inflation as we went. The remaining $4 million is just our best guess at what we need to do to keep up with the rest of infrastructure. This doesn't include curb and gutter, or sidewalks, or storm drains, or any of the bridge work. It's just, the 16 and the 8 is just the pavement condition maintenance, so really needing additional money in addition to that. So that's what we, you know, this would be a much better picture for us, obviously a long way off. What if we just wanted to stay where we are? If we just want to pay, to fund Streets and not worry about any of the other infrastructure, just to keep our street condition where it is right now, with a pavement condition index of 63, we would need $5 million a year, and we are short of that by about $2 million. So we are showing that the revenues go up here, sort of in line with inflation. We hope so, that's our assumption. However, that's not our recent experience. Our recent experience is actually that they are flat or declining. So this may be in need of some tweaking as we get better understanding about what future revenues will really look like. So what we are looking to do as a staff to support council budgeting is to try and balance the alternatives we have available to us with a hope to put more weight on the capital side of the scale. We are going to look at what's going on in the straight and federal funding opportunities, keep a close eye on those, and see if there's anything we can do to support more funding for Streets. to support more funding for streets and roads, look at options to increase revenues, either through fees or potentially through some kind of ballot or tax measure, look for operational efficiencies. And actually, Chris Toth will be back next week with a contract to jumpstart this effort. We currently have a lot of opportunities to improve the way we stretch our money, particularly within our streets operating fund. But in order to do that, we need better planning, management, and organization of that work. Right now, we have a great responsive street staff. If you call them, they'll be out there probably within the next day, if not the next week. But we aren't very good on the planned organized work. And responsive work is more expensive and less efficient than planned organized work. Unfortunately, making the transition from the responsive work to the planned organized work requires some management, and it also kind of creates a peak in workload because you still have to keep up with emergencies you're responding to while you're planning to avoid them in the future. So in order to do that more efficiently, we're hoping to contract with a company that advises on doing that and actually would provide us some staff support to do it, which is great because we need the extra work to get us there. So that will be before you next week. And then the last item that we are interested in looking at is the reallocation of funding from within our existing funds. As I indicated, we do a lot of things in streets that aren't technically streets. So for instance, graffiti abatement was historically general fund funded. However, during the recession, it was transferred completely into streets, seeing whether there's any room to try and put some general fund work back in there. Taking a look at the nexus between storm drain maintenance and water quality, and whether it's appropriate to use Measure B funds to support some of the infrastructure maintenance. Those types of discussions. There's, you know, obviously, there's no low-hanging fruit out there, but really digging in and trying to look at everything to see how we can push that level of investment into capital up as much as possible. So that is the, my fuller presentation. The intent was really just to give you a high-level overview of some of the challenges we're looking at and a sense of what we're hoping to do in the next few months.
Madam Mayor, if I could just chime in. This is just to let you know, as Ms. Bjork said, that our streets funding situation has gotten worse due to the decline in revenue, such that we're at the point that we're not able to maintain kind of the status quo that we've been able to do for the last number of years. And so we're down to the point of having to make some difficult decisions. And as Ms. Bjork and I have brainstormed, there's nothing easy here. And so we're not teeing up something that there's a, there's some easy solutions for you all to help us with, which is why we think recommending this go to a three-person subcommittee or the finance committee or something to dig into this issue to help start strategizing and come up with some options to bring back to the full council to consider. But I just want to promise you that you won't like the options that we're going to present to you on the table. And so this is going to be some hard work and some choices to make, but it's time to start grappling with this.
Great. We thought basketball was hard. Questions first, and then we do have a couple of public comment speakers. Okay, Ms. Maria.
I have a question, thank you. So what I heard at a meeting recently when Mr. Casey said, oh, the Streets Fund covers all kinds of stuff, the implication was that other cities maybe pay for some of this stuff in different ways. It, was that, did I hear that correctly? And is there something in that long list, Ms. Bjork? And I really like your graphic of the balance thing.
Thank you.
Very well done.
In the list of things that we've covered, that, you know, there, the things under roads, with the exception of street trees, where that may or may not happen, the things under roads are largely associated with streets revenue. We have a lot of bridges in this city, and we've been really fortunate to get federal funding for that. It still requires match funding. So we've put a lot of money into our bridge match funding. But in terms of the other things, a lot of the things that are up there, graffiti abatement could be, is not typically a street-funded thing. Garbage removal could be tagged to a solid waste franchise more. They already cover part of it. So a lot of the things under the right-of-way maintenance are more sort of general. This is the face of our city. Let's keep it looking good. Because it's in the right-of-way, we've assigned it to our Streets Fund, but it's really not in any way linked to the dedicated funding sources we get for that street fund.
Ms. Bjork and Mr. Forrester sitting here, when do we negotiate again with our trash hauler?
Let our city clerk answer that question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, the current contract runs through June 30th of 2023.
2023.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I, of course, sitting here, and I looked at storm drain, and I was thinking of Measure B money. And we would do that very carefully and make sure that it really did have a water quality nexus. We've been through that. And then I'm just going to mention the sales tax proposal again. I'd like to just float that for 2016.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just, those are the types of things that we think you need to start weighing the pros and cons of. Other jurisdictions might have assessment districts that cover median landscaping and things like that. Other jurisdictions, the general fund might pick up some of these tabs that we have the Streets Fund. Measure B could be an option. The Parking Fund could be an option. I mean, there's just lots of different, of tough choices. And that's what we would like some membership of your council to kind of work on and then bring some ideas back to the full council.
Great. Mr. Rouse, questions?
Yeah, I was trying to balance a few things out. The total revenue declining chart shows a 3.6% total revenue decline, which is not, obviously not a positive, but certainly not unusual for a lot of other sectors of the economy out there. And I was just wondering, because when we were going forth with our different infrastructure presentations at the public before, one of the bad boys we talked about was all the prices of the petroleum products that were causing us more expensive repairs and all the much we used that. I would think at this point in time that there should be some kind of a benefit or a boost to the oil market in terms of projecting out what it's going to cost us to make those repairs. And in terms of capital expenditures, this may be projecting too far out, but are, since the whole country's going through this, and so many small communities are doing the same types of math we are. Is there any sense in trying to get nailed-down capital contracts, capital materials, and projects in a futures kind of way? Because right now, certainly would be the opportune time, I would think, to be able to get some of those, those goods and services nailed down. Is there, because, you know, usually when we do projections, we do it with this inflation, everything in mind. Well, certainly, oil has not followed that pattern. And I'm just kind of wondering if there's any kind of a benefit out there to look into from that light.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse. I am unaware of a futures-type option for contracting. I think the variability, we don't deal with huge contractors, so I would be surprised if they were able to promise holding prices for multiple years. The decrease in cost of oil will reflect in the materials cost for the materials. Unfortunately, it's also reflecting in the decrease in the gas tax in some instances. So, you know, the other thing is that, given our current revenue picture, our opportunities to maximize capital is very slim because we have less and less money to program to capital and are really paring down the amount of work that we're doing. We currently are not doing capital overlay projects on residential streets. We are not doing any repairs on alleyways. We have virtually no program for sidewalks. We have no program for storm drains. So we don't have a lot of, and the little bit of capital money we do have, we're putting into, one, leveraging for our bridges because we're worried that that program might go away, and we still have some more 100-year-old bridges that we really want to make sure we're able to replace. And then, secondly, trying to keep our roadways in as good condition as possible so they don't start to go into steeper decline.
And then, a second question, slightly unrelated, but in the, the operating budget by program, that alternative transportation, $1.2 million, is that primarily the shuttles?
I, yeah, let's see. Alternative transportation, $1.2 million, includes the work-trip program, which is the city's program for transit, for carpooling, for employees. So some of that money is recovered through revenues. That program is self-offset. I just had some notes on that. It includes some traffic studies. I'm trying to remember, excuse me. Put your mic on, Mr. Toth.
Pardon me. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse. It involves a number of alternative transportation programs that include everything that's different than cars. So it includes the shuttle bus, the EZLIFT, I think. It includes the, you know, the Bicycle Master Planning projects that are in the loop. It includes bimodal pathways. It involves the employee work-trip program. It involves a lot of smaller programs that add up to a significant amount of money.
And a significant portion of that is the shuttle bus program, which is funded out of the alternative transportation budget. It's about $900,000 a year? $600,000 a year, somewhere. Sorry, not as familiar with this budget.
All right, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At SB CAG, there's, there's a, Measure A has a stream of funds that's dedicated to Highway 1, but there is also money that's being set aside for 101 that could, could come to the local jurisdictions to, to deal with issues such as these. Can you describe what those numbers are and?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White. I'm afraid I don't know how much money that would otherwise come to the city is being reserved. I do know it's, the money that would otherwise go to local, local improvements and local roadway improvement, it's being saved as match money, but I'm afraid I don't know the totals on that. I do know that there is an interest on the part of some of the agencies in having that put forward into just our current immediate problems, rather than save it for match money for, for the 101, just because of the urgency of the budget situation that many of us are looking at.
Thank you. But a ballpark order of magnitude number, we have that?
But I think what you're talking, and Mr. Hart probably knows this in the back of his hand, there's $140 million of Measure A that the voters said was in Measure A for 101. There's also $135 million of STIP money in addition to that, to 101, which before that investment policy was put together, did not necessarily go to the freeway.
There is in hand $135 million?
Not in hand, but being accumulated. Right, Mr. Hart, if you wanted to.
I think what you're referring to is the RSTP funds that, by the SB CAG's board's decision, are accumulating in a reserve for the construction of the 101 project. I think it's in the order of approximately like $3 million a year countywide. So I think if that were allocated by the formula to the local agencies, I think it would be about $600,000 or something like that on an annual basis to the city. Something like that.
That's been going on for how many years?
Well, since probably last four.
So a couple of $2 to $3 million, not $20 million, but a few million dollars.
Something like that, yes.
Thank you.
The storm drain issue, does wastewater department fit in that in terms of utility and dealing with wastewater? Would that be one other area to consider?
Madam Mayor, that's an area that we are looking for operational efficiencies in that the work that's done by the staff of the wastewater collection division, section, is very similar to the work of maintaining storm drains. The funding source is, is different, but we may be able to get some efficiency through reassigning the work and then assigning some portion of funding to support that work just because you've got the equipment there, better equipment share, better utilization of, of resources.
Okay.
Wastewater money can't really be used to support, you know, because of Prop 218, wastewater money really needs to stay for support of the wastewater infrastructure. But I do think we would still gain efficiencies by aligning the work.
Okay, I guess that was the, right, the legal question there. And I meant to email you beforehand, so I apologize if you don't know the answer to this. But recently, and I forwarded a letter to you that the League of Cities sent to us related to a memo from the California Transportation Commission, or actually, and the governor, to the state legislature that basically said, due to declining revenues at the state level, they're looking to either eliminate or postpone, I think, $750 million in programming throughout the state that had already been allocated, including some programs in Santa Barbara County. So I'm not sure, as I looked at the list, it was more regional programs, highway programs. I mean, I think we're even concerned about Phase 3 of the 101 project on there, and there's some other, the rail sightings, things like that, were all listed. So it wasn't local street maintenance, although I would imagine that this is still also in the mix in terms of what kind of allocation statewide they might give to us in the future. So I guess my question is on the gas tax revenue decline. That is just looking at trends of what we're seeing happen, but not anything dramatic change from Sacramento? Or is this just, were we seeing the decline in revenues just based on gas tax revenues going down?
Madam Mayor, these are numbers that we got at the very end of January for actual projected. We're actually expecting to have given to us for '16 and the projected for '17. So they're the best estimates of Sacramento as to how much gas tax we will be getting.
Okay.
So it's, you know, not quite actual, but it's close to actual as we have. And the numbers that they're replacing were Sacramento's last, last iteration of that. So what we had budgeted is what we were told to expect for gas tax. And now they've revised those numbers downward.
Okay, so if there were any major policy change in Sacramento at this point, that's not listed in this number. That could be.
That's correct.
Up or down, depending on what they do. Most, okay, okay. All right, let's go to public comment. We have two speaker slips here. We have Tom Woodrow and then Bonnie Raisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, Tom Woodrow, City Watch. We support the creation of an ad hoc committee to look at this issue. We support the creation of an ad hoc committee to look at this issue. The way our committee has discussed it, seems like there's a number of funding options, three of which come to mind, and one of them we discussed last year, which was the possibility of a general tax, which wasn't very popular with our group, just because people felt there wouldn't be sufficient oversight in future councils. There could be an oversight group, but it'd be unofficial, and, and if things got sour financially, the monies could be spent otherwise, so people were concerned about that. There was a little more support for a specific sales tax, something that I think Greg Hart and I, Councilmember Hart and I have discussed, is something that would delineate specific expenditures, be easy to get behind too, because it would outline things for the public in such a way that people would understand exactly where the money is going. And then the final one is something that happened at the Board of Supervisors. If you remember, Supervisor Adam had a measure that went down to defeat, but what it did do was spurred the Board of Supervisors to adopt this idea of an 18%, of future gross revenues to the county towards road infrastructure. It doesn't cure the county's infrastructure ills, but at the same time, it does put a big dent in it, and it was more politically viable perhaps than the idea of a tax or cutting into other essential services like public safety. So bottom line is, we support the creation of an ad hoc committee, and if City Watch can be of any assistance in helping you kind of get through the sticky issue and potentially generating the revenue one way or another that needs to happen. One other thing that City Watch is interested in too is, is cutting non-essential expenditures that are currently in the city's budget. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Bonnie Raisen, speaking for myself, but I could wholeheartedly agree with the comments that Mr. Widrow just made. However, I think if the general population were to see that first pie chart up there, you know, there's a definite imbalance in how the city spends its money, and understandably, pensions and salaries are important, very top-heavy, and not just in this city and county, but throughout the United States. That being said, infrastructure is something that has been close to my heart for a very long time, as a fiscal responsibility of any city council, to make infrastructure. And when I think of infrastructure, I think of the roads that are driven on, I think of the underwater water supplies that, that were inadequate during this last major storm, the age, the antiquity. It's a very dangerous and a very, very, very long overdue situation. An ad hoc committee, if they were to not pull funds from the highway widening, I think that's a very, you know, that would be very disappointing for many people. The highway has to be fixed, where it needs fixing. It's been too many years. But I, I think what I'm trying to say is that it's good that you're addressing this. I do not think it's fair until you've studied this for a while with many, many other options other than increased revenue from a city tax of any kind. We are in a recession.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your time and good luck.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. I want to just ask our city attorney just to put in context, because one of the options, if we did want to put something on the ballot in November after the process, we're going to have a committee and, you know, blah, blah, blah. But because this is not a regular council election year, I think the rules change in terms of if the council wanted to put something, a tax measure in particular, on the ballot, and I know there's differences between a general tax and a special tax, but just in terms of the votes required to put something like that on this November's ballot, what would be the threshold?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, to put a general tax on in an election year where the city council doesn't have seats up for election would require the city council to find a fiscal emergency by unanimous vote. The taxing measure itself would require five votes under the Board of Equalizations rules. A special tax could be put on the ballot with those same five votes without a unanimous declaration of fiscal emergency.
Thank you. And I think the last time we did that was Measure G with the UUT tax, when there were some new rules at the state to keep our, keep our UUT tax, and we did do that at that point. That was an even year, as I recall. I don't see any likes on it. I'll just start with some, I guess, some comments for the committee, whichever committee it is, to just add some ideas to the list, because you mentioned a lot of them, but some others that came up for me were, you know, we, we've been very successful lately, actually award winning and getting these permeable pavers done in areas on sidewalks, and, I mean, it does two things. It created, reduced runoff, it recharged the ground basin, we were able to use grant funding and Measure B money for it, and it also around Alex Keck Park Gardens, for example, new sidewalk. So, you know, those kind of, there might be other areas where that fits, or alleyways, you know, and certain areas where maybe it floods more recently or more frequently, and that would be Measure B funds, but that's another way of, I guess, think, and also having some added benefit for storm runoff and, and recharging the ground basin. In terms of looking at the county, the, as Mr. Widrow mentioned, as I understood it, the policy is, it'd be, it'd be good just to know the numbers, right? I think the county's policy is 18% of unallocated future growth, growth goes to both streets and infrastructure. My memory, if my memory is correct, that the last, their last budget, that only amounted to about $200,000 or so. They had to add other funding to their infrastructure budget in order to add to, you know, the projects that they wanted. So, and I know over time, they thought, they believe that's going to grow, and that's fantastic if it does. I just want to make sure, what you're telling us is that if we want to get to 70 in terms of the maintenance of our roads, we need to put in an influx of money, significant influx of money, right away to stop the degradation happening and then maintain it forward. So a policy such as that future allocation of growth with that, answer the question. So those are just some of the things, you know, in terms of comparing what other jurisdictions are doing, that would be good, good to know. And then finally, I'll mention, the League of Cities has initiated a coalition of a number of different statewide groups in the construction field, in labor, in the Chamber of Commerce, all looking at infrastructure in particular, and streets and roads, and trying to focus on what's happening at a state level for either a new funding resource or reallocation of their current policies. There's, there's a lot going on at that level, and I would suggest that this committee look to the league and what they're up to, and maybe, maybe that's a role for us in participating in that process, because there may be something that, that happens during the legislative year or in the November ballot, that if it's not a local measure here, it might help us to look at what's happening statewide. So that would be, and then my final just comment to my colleagues as we figure out how to move forward is, this is complicated stuff. I, I mean, there are so many rules about what source of funding can be used for what purpose, and, you know, we, I still kind of ask those same questions, can we use wastewater money for, you know, stormwater things? I hear all the time from general public, why don't you just use, you know, water money to, you know, pave the streets, just because we're not allowed to under the law? So to me, the more transparent we can be in our conversation about this and getting information out to the general public as we're having the conversation, so they can understand with us, so Mr. Widrow and Ms. Raisen and other people interested can be in the room somehow that, you know, when we're hearing as much as we can, you know, or at least get the information out about what all the issues are, whether it's through social media or during the meetings, that's going to help us when it comes time to make a decision. Because if we get to a point where we need to put something on the ballot, or we're going to need to raid the general fund and raid other programs that are very popular in order for this, because we have no good option, at least we did the work in terms of educating the general public of why, how we got to that point, why those, why those recommendations were even brought up in the first place. So in this case, sunshine and transparency during what would be a very messy, complicated process, I think can only help to serve us, because otherwise, this room will be packed with people sitting, standing right there saying, why are you doing this, why can't you do that? And we've had that discussion for legal and other reasons. So that would just be my thought moving forward on, on how to grapple with these issues. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we're, this is, well, this is a nice opportunity to state our views on this topic. I appreciate that the focus of this meeting is to develop the subcommittee. And so obviously, from, from my perspective, I've, this, the infrastructure issue has been at the foundation of my being on council, and I've worked hard on it and continue to hope that we can find a way to, to better our situation. It's, it's tragic that we're, our beautiful city is, is hurting this much in this area and some others. Even wherever we're talking about taking money from, we'll find an underdeveloped infrastructure situation as well, for example, on our water pipes and sewer pipes, they're hurting as well. So I, and I agree also about the sunshine issue. I raised the issue on, on regional funding. Clearly, we, we need to look at everything, and that would be part of what, what a subcommittee would do. I ask that I be part of that. Obviously, it's been something that I've worked on for these last few years and would like to continue to do so. One option could be the finance committee as, this being a finance committee activity. I'd throw that out there as one option, and maybe others will have other ideas.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I think that staff and the questions from council have really teed this up perfectly. There are no silver bullets, there are no easy answers. There isn't going to be one way to solve this, it's going to take a lot of hard choices added together, because the, the scale of the problem is just too big for any one solution. Even a tax measure that generated $10 million a year, it wouldn't be sufficient by itself. So we're going to have to do this hard work, it's just a matter of, you know, when, and I think that the mayor's point and Councilmember White's point about the transparency, the need for the transparency of this process, so that people feel as though every sacred cow was looked at and every, you know, rock was turned over, is, is critical to the success of this. And, you know, I do, I, like Councilmember White, I think the finance committee might be a venue, but I'm certainly not married to that as, as the only way to do it. I would like to participate in this. The advantage of the finance committee meeting is, is they are televised and they're scheduled. So that's really the only comment I have at this point.
Thanks, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, having been part of the Randy Bendy Halyne Show, we went out there and talked to the public about infrastructure, we talked about different methods by which we may raise some funds. I think we got a, we didn't get there in terms of putting something on the ballot, but we did discover the public appetite and the public desire to get this done, and I think it's out there. I think they, they realize it, it's a nationwide discussion, nobody's not having this discussion right now. You know, I, once again, we're down 3.6% in revenue. I don't call that necessarily a financial emergency, I'd have a hard time getting my arms around that concept, but it is still, even status quo funding was far behind where we needed to be in terms of doing this. I think it's really important to also put out the word, what we do in terms of how we spend the money, what, what staff does versus what we do with, with contract work, and how we do that, and how we leverage grants and how we go forward, so it's not just, the general public can make it seem like it's a, a make-work project for government employees, and that's, that's not the case. We actually, our staff does leverage our funds appropriately, but as Mr. Hart said, there are at least sacred cows, if not perceived sacred cows, that we all should be looked at. We opened up all the boxes, and I think it's a, it's a healthy, very painful exercise. I would defer to a finance committee, because I think you're right about the televised meetings and the public aspect, but if somebody wants to bail out, I'd also volunteer my services on that committee.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think the, we got, we got an ad hoc committee, it's called the Finance Committee, and they are well-qualified and, as you point out, televised, so my suggestion is that we turn this over to them, it makes their work a little more difficult maybe, but they are really, they've got their nose to the grindstone, and I have confidence in that they do a good job.
Like to make a motion to that effect? I don't see any other likes.
That is, that is a motion.
There a second? To the finance, to make, to make this the, the committee, that move this item to the Finance Committee?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion by Hotchkiss, second by White. What a great way for Councilmember Dominguez to know every little nook and cranny of the budget through the Finance Committee. Any, anything else on this item?
Madam Mayor, I guess I'll vote for that motion. I'm just hoping there'll be some good public outreach so that people know it's not just a bunch of suits sitting down there at the Gebhard Room, that they're tackling something that's going to benefit and affect the future, so that it's not just the Finance Committee, there's something really important happening there.
Well, and since those are already televised, it's not adding cost to having an archive of all those discussions, so when we get to that point, if people wanted to review them and they couldn't make the meeting.
Like a city, a city, sorry to interrupt you, a city TV segment, you know, launching it.
Right, no, but my point is, since the Finance Committee meetings are already televised, so, you know, once we get to a decision-making point, we can remind people that these were all the dates of when the conversations happened, if they wanted to revisit the discussion. So we wouldn't necessarily have that option if we didn't televise the meeting, so I think that's actually a good thing. Okay, we know the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. That part was unanimous, we'll see what the next vote related on this topic will be, but, okay. Any council member, committee assignment reports? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Not really a committee assignment report, but I went to the Superior Court Collaborative Court's commencement ceremony yesterday. I've done this every year, this time 18 people, including a friend of mine. And it's really wonderful to people, see people realize that this is a, generally the end of a year of dedication to turning their lives around, but fully aware that it's just part of the process, and speaking very much from the heart. So, and very appreciative of the governmental forces and the legal forces that have helped them face reality and turn to social services for assistance and success.
Great, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended my first Central Coast Water Authority meeting this, this last week, and Ray Stokes, the manager of that district, or that agency, provided a, a real whiz-bang assessment of the state as well as the local water situation. I'm not going to try and put those numbers before you, we'll get that, some of that from our own staff at our, at our next update, but one of the points he made was how much water was going into the San Francisco Bay and not, not being able to be captured by, by dams and the such for, for our, for people use in the meanwhile. And the other piece is that the Central Coast chapter of the American Public Works Association awarded the flood, County Flood Control and the City of Santa Barbara, an award for the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project reaches A, 1A, 2, and 1B.
Great, Mr. Hart?
Last week, with Councilmember Murillo and Councilmember Dominguez participated with coast on the East Side Walk, going through the neighborhoods over on the east side where the new LED light bulbs have been installed, and it's dramatically improved lighting in that neighborhood. I think folks there were very excited about the, the new improvements. They obviously would love to see some other specific dark areas illuminated a little bit better, but it was overall, I think, really well-received. And then the Police and Fire Commission met last week and did their annual meeting with the tow operators that have licenses in the city of Santa Barbara, renewing them, it's one of the more arcane roles of the Police and Fire Commission, and I know that they're looking forward to having Mr. Casey come next month and talk to them about the recruitment for the new police chief, which they have a role to play in.
Ms. Murillo?
Madam Mayor, the city's county affordable housing task group met last week. We heard a long presentation from UC Santa Barbara, they're building a lot of housing out there in, you know, what I consider some open space areas, but, you know, we need the housing. And a representative from City College was also there, and she got a lot of heat for City College creating a housing demand and the need for them to do something about it. The Sustainability Committee met, and we reviewed a bunch of projects, that was my first Sustainability Committee meeting, that was great, thank you. And then the, the Permaculture Network had Ethan Stewart of the Santa Barbara Independent give a report back from the Paris climate change talks. It was wonderful. And by the way, our youth council wants to hear a presentation of our climate change action plan. So there's just ripples going through the community on that subject. Oh, and then I went to the Chamber of Commerce Business Awards, and just real quick, the Zoo, Marbor, Grissini Wines, Michelle Appodaca, I think of Deckers, and Steve Americonner got honors there, and it was a very nice lunch, thank you.
So some other awardees, really very exciting, Cass Ensberg, you may remember her, she always brings the little calendars of the children's architect drawings, and she was just awarded to be a Fellow of the AIA, which is the highest honor that that national organization gives. It's a very long, arduous application project. She is the first woman in Santa Barbara County to get this award since Luda, Luda?
Riggs.
Riggs, thank you, in 1960. So it's been a long time coming for that. And then also on Friday, I had the opportunity to give some certificates of appreciation to Bob Kirkby and Lad Handelman, who received a Nogie Award. I didn't know, don't ask me what that stands for, but it, it's like the highest award that deep sea divers can receive, and it's sort of like their Hall of Fame on a national level, and they usually have a national conference, and the two individual, the two men could not go to Las Vegas to receive it, so the awards came to them, and there was a big party at the Maritime Museum, so that was, that was also quite fun. So with that, we have a closed session, if you can read that.
Public and?
Go ahead.
Public employee appointment, library director.
And one more.
And conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is Tony M. Reyes versus City of Santa Barbara et al., SBSC case number 1416050.
Okay, we're going to do one and have a, most likely a report out, so stay tuned for that. We will be back. Okay, I'm going to call the council meeting back into open session, we do have to report out on a closed session item. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to announce that you approved my recommendation of appointing Jessica Cadiente as the library director for the City of Santa Barbara. Jessica has been with the city a little over nine months, in the last five months as the acting library director. Prior to that, she was the library director for the City of Lompoc, as well as other years of experience in providing library services, and I think she'll be an outstanding library director for a challenging job that provides library services not only in the city, but we contract with a number of jurisdictions to provide their library services as well countywide, so.
Thank you, and I think we need to report how the vote was, and the vote was unanimous. Mr. Klon?
Yeah.
Yeah, the vote was unanimous, he agreed. Would you like to come on up, Jessica, and congratulations?
Madam Mayor, city council members, as Mr. Casey alluded to, I've been with the city just a little over nine months now, but I've been a part of the Black Gold Cooperative for over three years, and the Santa Barbara Public Library System is truly the gold standard for library services in the Central Coast, and it's just such an honor and privilege to lead-